Welcome to the Joint Budget Workshop of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 20th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll and include the Budget Review Committee, please.
Before I call the roll, Councilmember Costin will be arriving after roll call. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Hayden?
Here.
Long?
He's here.
He's here.
He's here.
He's here. He went to for coffee.
Just wanted to get coffee.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Bates?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
And I would like to announce that Councilmember Costin is here as well. So we have all present.
Thank you. Item five is Discussion. Five A is Citizens' Input. Citizens' Input times a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters of city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone wishing to participate in Citizens' Input, we will use the podium to the left.
Mayor, if I may, call the roll for the BRC members?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did that.
Before I call the roll for the members for the Budget Review Committee, I would like to announce that Councilmembers Battalow and Lorick requested to be excused, and I will mark them so. Gruber?
Here.
Merchant?
Here.
Reagan?
Here.
Shadrack?
Here.
Starner?
Here.
Five present and two excused.
Thank you for attending. We'll move on to that Citizens' Input now. Is there anyone wishing to participate in Citizens' Input? Please come forward. Seeing none, Citizens' Input is now closed. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item 5B. Today, B1 is a discussion for FY '23 Preliminary Budget, and I will turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Members of City Council, Members of the Budget Review Committee, and staff. This is our third workshop designed to elicit input from City Council, Budget Workshop, the public, and others to assist us in preparing the proposed budget that is due to you the first week of August. At our last meeting, we've had discussion with regard to a preliminary budget that we submitted that will form the basis for the proposed budget. And at that time, we engaged you in a conversation about possible millage rate scenarios based on an estimate of what the growth in property tax revenues could be as of June 1st. Following that workshop, the Property Appraisers Office issued the final values on July 1st. We took that information into account and adjusted the millage rates accordingly because we ended up picking up an additional $529 million in additional valuation, which provided additional property tax revenues to the city. So today, we're going to basically follow the same format that we had at our last workshop, and that is set the stage in terms of what are the priority issues that are out there? What are some of the discussion points that you shared with us in terms of what you wanted to see included in the budget? And then we provided you a series of millage rate scenarios based on the conversation that we had at our last workshop that takes into account the certified values that were issued to us on July 1st. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would like to turn it over to Mark Mason for this next portion of our discussion. Mr. Mason?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Members of the Budget Review Committee, and the Members of the City Staff, and anybody watching on TV. The... As the City Manager stated, we're back before you to talk about four things today. Of course, this doesn't work. Should have known. Today, our goals for our meeting today, again, our goals for this meeting today are to establish a target operating millage rate, determine the budget stabilization reserve level targets, agree on a one-time expenditures that are... that we've talked through through the last budget retreat that we had, and then, of course, set water and sewer rate adjustments. So with that, the overall agenda is broken up into about four or five different parts.
If I can just interrupt Mr. Mason for just one second. Members of City Council, the last slide that Mr. Mason presented on the screen, we have to walk out of here today with a clear consensus on those four points that Mr. Mason just identified for you. Without clear consensus, I can't put together a proposed budget for your consideration. I guess I could, but it won't be worth anything. So we really need, in order for us to be successful and for staff to do our work, we have to get decisions on those four points. Okay? Thank you.
So during the course of the presentation, if you want to interrupt, feel free. If there are any questions you have, feel free. We have transition points between each one of these items if we want to talk about each one of those items, or we can go through the entire presentation and have the discussion afterwards. So to begin with, the first part is to remind everybody on the budget guidelines and exactly what we use to develop the budget. Budget guidelines were developed after and during the first budget retreat in January, where we went through and we developed the final... the strategic plan of which we've come back and we've gone through with the City Council on several occasions. We looked at the millage rate at the time. We, at the end of last year, we had looked at a 10% increase in property tax revenue as the target, and whatever millage rate came with that is what the target rate would have been. So we've developed the budget based upon a 10% increase in property tax revenue. Fire service assessment, 62% cost recovery. Nothing has changed. The budget is built on a 62% cost recovery. Employee compensation, as was discussed last year, we are in the process of fire negotiations, and currently, we're in the process of police negotiations. We had wrapped up, or were in the process of wrapping up, the implementation of the General Employees Union negotiations and the final contract. Discretionary spending. We had held the discretionary spending, which would be operating expenses, capital outweigh, to the 2023 forecast with adjustments for inflation. As we know, during the course of the last six months, inflation, or actually, I should say, for almost the course of the last year, inflation has been very high, you know, with the most recent inflation rate of 9.1%. Not sure exactly where that's going to end up going. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I thought I changed it. And so the discretionary... So we're looking at inflationary issues, and we were just... Basically, we were just notified here recently of a new impact to inflation, and that would have been the electric with the changes in the fuel charge adjustments. And so with that in mind, we'll talk about that a little bit later and what the impact of that will be for both the general fund and for all other funds. Charter School Financial Sustainability, during the course of the last... the preparation of the last budget, we had set aside about $2.6 million of new revenue from the public service tax by removing the first 500-kilowatt exemption. And those funds have begun to come in in May after they went into effect in April. And at this point, we're meeting the goals of the amount that we would expect to receive on a 1/12th, 1/12th basis. So we expect to receive the $2.6 million, but it won't be in the current fiscal year. We'll receive about half of that. One-time funding for capital maintenance and studies. Again, we've talked about the idea of utilizing excess reserves in order to fund one-time expenditures, and we've done that, and that is included in the budget as well. So as a reminder, our overall Cape Coral vision, mission, principles, core values, we developed a strategic plan. The City Council has seen the strategic plan, and we've... So I'm not going to go through each one of the items, but I just want to remind the City Council that we have built the budget based upon this strategic plan with the goal of achieving the goals and the goals that were decided upon by the City Council and the City Staff. So the strategic priorities, the various focus areas and the goals are all included as far as the budget is concerned. As we were building the budget during the course of the last six months, some of the economic factors, the things that we needed to take into account, you know, that in the development of the budget were the effects of inflation on fiscal year 2022 budget as well as the 2023 build. We just talked recently, and we just talked about that a little bit. But overall, we're seeing on average about a 6% to 7% to 8% increase in cost and in our delivery service cost to the public on a monthly basis. Not sure when that's going to end. The, you know, the Federal Reserve is doing what it can in order to try to stem the tide of inflation. However, it doesn't appear that their efforts have been successful so far. So we'll continue to see what the next action by the Federal Reserve will be. Effect on ad valorem reduction due to the additional exemption. As you're aware, the Florida Legislature has passed a law that will allow for the public to vote on a referendum in November that will provide an additional $50,000 exemption for classroom teachers, law enforcement officers, correctional officers, et cetera. I don't need to read all of them up there. But all of these would be active-duty folks that, as of January 1, 2023. Of course, if it's passed in November 2022. At this point, we don't really know how many people live here that meet the definition associated with this. But just in thinking of the numbers that, you know, that might be available to us, looking at our current millage rate, looking at the fact that, let's just assume we have 2,000 households that meet this current definition. At our current millage rate, that comes out to about 625,000 that we would not have available to us in the future if this passes. Now, it just assumes 2,000 households out of about 80,000 households in the city of Cape Coral, but it could be double that. You know, again, I don't really know what the number is, and I'm not sure that we ever will know what the number is until this passes and we see the actual exemptions on the tax roll. We have continued fuel volatility. The rates are up. I mean, the cost of fuel is up, the cost of fuel is down. You know, it's... You drive by the gas stations, but for us, we don't pay the taxes that are associated with it, so our cost is a little bit less. But it's just... That's just the tax portion of it. We still have to pay the higher cost. And we've given you a report on that about what we're expecting for the remainder of the year. We've taken this information into account as we've built the budget for next year. Again, the LCEC Fuel Cost Adjustment Impacts. As you're aware, the fuel cost adjustments went into effect as of July 1. And for any bills that came out after that, the increase in the fuel cost adjustment went from .0228 per kilowatt hour to .0555 per kilowatt hour. So that's a $50... An additional $50 per thousand kilowatt hours, you know, versus the $22 that it was. So with that in mind, you know, we have gone back and we've evaluated for next fiscal year, although we will have an impact for the remainder of the three months for this year. We're really focusing on next year. And for the general fund, we're expecting about a $400,000 increase. For all funds, primarily the Water and Sewer Fund, we're expecting about a $2 million increase. So this assumes that this particular fuel cost adjustment will be in place every month for the next fiscal year, but I have no reason to expect that it won't be. Current natural gas prices continue to be high, you know, in the $8 per million cubic feet. Terms, you know, there's a lot of words to use when it comes to buying liquid natural gas, but at the end of the day, the price is still very high, and it doesn't appear that it's going to be coming down anytime soon. Fire Union Impasse Resolution Results and the Effects of It on the Budget. I think we've settled now where we expect to be, bring the contract back to the City Council. So we've taken those impacts into account for not only the current year, for fiscal year 2023, but for future years as well. Those impacts impact us each and every single year going forward. Same thing for the police union negotiations. We've made certain assumptions, and we've included those in the overall estimate of costs. So not only do we have the continuing recurring cost associated with that, but any additional police officers, et cetera, that we bring on will be impacted by those increases as well. Pension contribution, potential increases based upon potential losses. You know, at this point, last year, at this time, the Dow was about 38,000. Now it's around 31,000. And, you know, that is a big loss that we would end up assuming that it is still in place as of September 30th. We need to be cognizant of that loss and the impact on us that we will incur from that and whatever those changes to the pension contributions might happen because of those losses. And on the recession front, there's still a lot of talk about recession. As a matter of fact, this morning, I think the chief economist for Florida State University stated unequivocally that Florida will be in a recession by the end of the year. And so with those thoughts in mind, we have built the budget from a sustainability standpoint in order to... But at the same time, we're going to have to make some adjustments to take into account the LCEC charges, which are not currently included in the budget. So as we were developing this presentation, I was reminded of the fact that, you know, the... What's the largest revenue source in the general fund? And the general fund is the largest fund that funds the majority of the services within the city of Cape Coral, and that's been property taxes. For years, prior years, it was actually higher than 50%, but we're at 50%. And, you know, if you look at cities of similar size to us, they're usually a little bit less than that. So... But at the same time, we need to be cognizant that we are driven by one particular adjustable rate. Most of the other revenue sources in the general fund, such as intergovernmental revenues from the state of Florida, rely on the state of Florida's estimating... Their estimating revenues, how much they expect to receive, and then how much we would expect to receive as a result of our population as a percentage of the whole. At the same time, we, you know, so we have no adjusted... We have no control over what those numbers are. They are what they are when we receive them. Internal service charges, these are the chargebacks that we charge to the Water and Sewer Fund, to the Stormwater Fund, to the, you know, the enterprise funds and the... as well as the special revenue funds that we service, that the employees of the general fund provide services to. We have miscellaneous revenues, and, you know, in that case, we, you know, we have a... Again, they're not necessarily adjustable. They are what they are. In this case, it's also, you know, it's interest rate. It's interest. Interest earnings on whatever our investments are. And so, you know, as the Fed changes their policy about increasing rates, so too will our interest also increase. But again, you know, the same is true when it goes back down. So too does our interest go back down. So again, it's not adjustable for us. It's... It is what it is. Sales and use taxes, that all comes from the state of Florida. It's calculated based upon a percentage... It's all based upon a percentage of our population as a percentage of the whole in Lee County. The... So the point of this exercise and the point of the discussion is that the City Council has very few points of adjustment within the general fund that can provide services to all of the parts of the general fund, with the property taxes being generally the Lone Ranger of most of them and the largest revenue source within the general fund. So when it comes to ad valorem taxes, and we've talked about the millage rate, we talk about, you know, it provides for the general operations of the city. General operations of the city covers the cost of police. It covers public works. It covers parks and recreation. It covers the, in many cases, the portion of financial services and other internal services that are, you know, provided the City Council, City Manager, et cetera. And the way it's calculated is it's fairly simple. It's whatever the millage rate is times your taxable value, you know, equals the ad valorem taxes for any individual within the city. And it is expressed in terms of the rate of 1,000. So, you know, if you have a $200,000 house, you divide it by 1,000, you get 2,000. That multiplied by your millage rate, that's your tax. The City Manager's preliminary budget was based upon a 10% increase in tax revenues, not upon a particular rate. And so when we were talking with you in... At the June Retreat, we were working off of millage rates or values that were estimated by the property appraiser. On July 1, we receive a certified taxable value. And when we received the certified taxable value, it was, at the time, it was about $560 million more in additional taxable value that was not available to us when we talked about it in June. That's the reason why the development of a budget is a long-period exercise in guesswork, et cetera, until you actually get the actual numbers. So when you're talking about the rate that we're dealing with today, so we originally were talking about 5.7 mills, thereabouts. Now we're at 5.5568 mills. That equates back to the 10% increase in taxes. That equates back to the funding of the proposed budget that we provided to you. The City Manager's proposed budget also has another millage rate, and that's for the general obligation bond for parks debt service at .0471. So when we're also talking about ad valorem taxes, we talk about the rollback rate, although it's not necessarily up here to talk about. It's a subject matter that I think, you know, for everybody's edification, exactly what the rollback rate means. The rollback rate means that you will recover the same amount of taxes that you recovered in the prior year plus growth. Growth means basically the growth in, not in the value of the properties, it's the growth of new construction. That's the growth. And so when the rollback rate was developed at the state level years and years and years ago, it was developed with the understanding that we're going to hold you to no increase in taxes and hold you to the fact that the only growth that you should have is the growth in your personnel and what you have to service this new construction with. That's essentially what the rollback rate means. That's the reason why if you go above the rollback rate, what we have to publish in the newspaper is that there's a tax increase. But the... And that's how the... That's the structure of the rollback rate. But the rollback rate literally means is that you get no new revenue. You get no more revenue. You have to rely on all these other revenue sources that, you know, may or may not fluctuate to, you know, to be able to pay for your union contracts, to be able to pay for, you know, the services, to be able to pay for fuel, to be able to pay for electric, to be able to pay for all these other things that you have to pay for. But you get no new revenue as far as the... As far as property taxes are concerned. But on the growth side, that says, so basically, if you added this much in value or this many homes, you might need to hire this many more firefighters. You might need to hire this many more police officers. You might need to hire this many more public works directors because you have more streets to maintain. You might have to do these to, you know, to maintain or even, you know, build a new park because you added this many people. Okay? However, the rollback rate doesn't provide for a lot of that. Rollback rate really doesn't only provides for that little small portion that then gets rolled up into each and every successive year, assuming that those are the numbers that will help you succeed and be sustainable in the future, barring that the fact that they, you know, there's no inflation, there's no cost increases, there's no nothing else. So as we were developing the budget, you know, we looked back at our strategic plan. Our strategic plan says, where do you want to be in order to grow into a vibrant and inclusive community that encourages residential character, creates economic opportunity, and ensures the respect for the unique environment? That is our vision. And so we looked at the millage rates and said, okay, well, which millage rates would help us achieve that particular vision? At the core level, we're going to, you know, essentially keep our reserves at the same 2.5 months. Some of the strategic plan initiatives will be funded. The majority will not. And the ULI, we had them come in. They gave us a nice report, but frankly, the core level will not fund any of the ULI recommendations. We also came up with a fallback rate. This gives you some progress towards a budget stabilization of three months, if that's the goal of the City Council. Strategic plan initiatives, again, you're funding some of them, but you're not funding all of them. And again, ULI recommendations are not really funded. So the idea being is that at those particular rates, you know, you're not going to be able to do a whole lot towards achieving the overall strategic vision. At the preliminary rate, we look at this as the sustainable rate. This provides the necessary resources to not only deal with the growth, to deal with the increases that have been approved, to deal with, you know, the understanding that, you know, the idea of being able to not only hold the growth that we have, but be able to sustain it into the future. Halfback rate, it's 5.9. In this particular case, you'll be able to do... You'll be able to get to a budget stabilization of three months, if that's the goal of the City Council. Advanced funding for the strategic plan initiatives. In other words, we can set aside money today to do some of those or we can do even more than what we have already funded. And the basic ULI recommendations would likely be able to be funded utilizing that rate. Keeping the rate the same, you'll be able to do a lot more. Again, many of the strategic plan initiatives will be funded, and many of the ULI recommendations, in this particular case, although not necessarily fully funded, they would at least be moderately funded. However, the City Manager and the City, and, you know, our recommendation is and has been and continues to be to maintain a sustainable rate for the city going forward and utilize 5.5568 to fund the general fund. As a reminder to everybody, when you're looking at, you know, what the rollback rate means, the rollback rate means is that we would be collecting an additional $6.7 million in revenue that will fund some of the additions that we're looking at, but at the same time, we'll have to cut some other resources in order to be able to do that, which we'll see here in a minute. Fallback rate would bring in about 8.8 million. Preliminary brings in 11 million. Halfback brings in 18, and the maximum rate would bring in about $26 million additional resources in order to do many of the things that are out there on our CIP as well as some of the items that are still yet to do in the city. So the millage rate options, as we talked about, if we go to the... If we were to go to the halfback rate, you'd see a 5.5% reduction in the millage rate. You'd see 11.1 reduction in the millage rate going to 5.5568. And going down to the rollback rate, it'd be a 14.1% reduction in the millage rate. Doesn't mean a 14.1% reduction in taxes, but it means a 14.1% reduction in the millage rate. So in this particular slide, I realize it's pretty busy. It's pretty big. You know, there's a lot of numbers on it. But the realization is, is that in order to do the additions, the things that we recommended be included in the program modifications for the initial budget as well as taking into account the potential... The union pay changes as well as the potential addition for the police union as well, that those total additions would come in at 6.9 million and which would give us a net expenditure of 1.3. And in order to be able to fund that, we would have to reduce the proposed operating budget as well as capital budget by reducing the... By reducing the public works by a moderate amount of about 228,000 and reducing fleet acquisitions by a little over a million. Now, some of those fleet acquisitions, they may be, you know, they may be deferred. They may not ever be replaced. We're in the process of going through an evaluation of our fleet. So, you know, some of those, again, may not be replaced in the future. But the real issue here isn't the fact that, you know, we... here isn't the fact that, you know, we would end up having to cut some of the items that are in the budget, is that it's what our forecast shows for the net revenue deficit in future years at those particular millage rates. In this particular circumstance, you know, we forecast out, based upon the budget that we've prepared for future years. We take into account, and I will tell you upfront, that we're conservative in our approach. We have gone, we have had a discussion with STANTEC, and we're prepared to bring back STANTEC to show you what the effects are, which are very similar to the effects that I'm going to show you today. The $7 million we would see as a deficit going into fiscal year 2024 assumes that we would see a 4% increase in property tax revenue for fiscal year 2024, little over a 3.6% increase in revenues, in other general fund revenues. And we would also look at the, let's see, personnel increases. We look at an average increase in future years of about 4.14%. And we're talking about personal services, we're not talking about salaries, we're talking about everything that's included in personal service. Talking about salaries, talking about the increases in pension contributions, talking about health insurance increases, et cetera. At the same time, we're looking at about a, an average of 2% increase in operating costs for fiscal year '24 through '27, which may or may not actually keep up with the, the actual cost of inflation going forward. So, but overall, when you're looking at all operating expenses, you'd be looking at about 2%. And on the capital side, we look at it about a 1% increase year over year. So, whatever that, whatever the dollar value is we're replacing today, we look at replacing the same level of dollar value in future years with a 1% increase associated with that. All the capital is generally associated with vehicles and equipment replacements. So, at the rollback rate, we would look, be looking at four years of future deficits that we would need to overcome, you know, regardless of what happens. You know, if we set the, the trajectory on the rollback rate today, we'll have to figure out how we overcome those deficits in the future. Fallback rate, again, the same thing. We look at future deficits for four years. At the preliminary budget rate, which the, we would look at, even though there's a deficit in 2024, that deficit is solely associated with funding the, the design for the golf course, as well as J.C. Park improvements through current revenue. And that's, you know, we're making the assumption that, you know, that current revenues would be the source of revenue, and if it's not, then, you know, the numbers come down a little bit. That's the same for all, all five millage rates. And of course, at the halfback rate and the no change in rate, you have nothing but positive results going forward. So, I look at, you know, the, when I'm looking at these millage rates, and I'm looking at the preliminary budget rate that we've put together, I'm, I'm always thinking about the fact that, you know, in a growing city, of which I've been the finance director in a growing city before, that, you know, we must be able to keep up with that, and we must be able to sustain those service and growth demands as they come. So, in order to be able to do that, we look at a much, we look at a sustainable rate, such as the one that we've prepared. So, a little history on taxable values. It's always interesting to look at this picture because, you know, you just never know where it's going to be. When we were here before, in 2006, we certainly never, ever expected to see a 55% increase in property values. But at the same time, in 2007, we never expected to see a decrease after such a large increase. And so, I look at 2022 in similarities to those periods of previous years. The results of the, the downturn in 2007 don't necessarily exist today. Those results were the fact that, you know, we had a lot of risky loans out there, and the banks were, you know, the, what did the Federal Reserve chairman call it at the time, an irrational exuberance associated with this? So, those events don't occur today, but at the same time, in that particular period, we didn't have the runaway inflation that we currently have. And so, the last time we've had this type of inflation was back in the late 70s, 80s. But even then, the economic circumstances of those years don't compare to the economic circumstances of these years. So, the hard part is, is that there's no way to really predict what's going to happen in the future. We have a noted economist in the state of Florida right now with FSU predicting we'll be in a recession by the end of the year. What does that mean for us in future years? Hard to tell. Don't really, not really sure what's going to happen as far as property values are concerned. We already know that we've seen some, you know, sales already coming down from the peaks of where they were. But at the same time, construction is still at an all-time high. So, I, I'm not predicting what's going to happen next year, but I would like to be able to, to guard against it if something does occur in the future. And so, I show you a graph of this, this millage rate history, to show you that, you know, some of the things that we did in the past in order to guard against those increases. But at the same time, you know, 2008 and 2009, when we didn't go back to the rollback rate was, was, you know, it, it provided some, well, it was very, it was painful. So, in 2007, I think, you know, when we actually saw a decrease in value, actually, it was the year before. 2006 to get to 2007 is when we hit the highest peak at $21.6 billion. We're at now just over that, and, and it took us 15 years to get there. So, what we're looking at here is that we didn't go to the rollback rate then. We actually brought in additional resources in order to help smooth the, the, the potential downturn that actually ended up happening. And I recognize that, you know, hindsight's 2020 here, but, you know, we didn't know what was going to happen in 2007 either. You know, the, the risky, the risky loans really didn't come out of, you know, come out until later on. You know, everybody was still writing about, hey, you know, we've got nothing but growth going on here, and it's continued growth. Let's go, let's go forward and continue to grow. We pulled, there was a number of permits that were pulled, you know, just before the downturn, that in some cases, we had houses that were standing out here in the city that were half-built. And in some cases, most of those permits that were paid for, we ended up having to reimburse back because they never built. And so, in this circumstance, we recognize that, yes, we kept the millage rate up at that time. We didn't do, in the follow-on years, we didn't go to the rollback rates that, you know, or the higher millage rates that were available to us. We lost a lot of equity in being able to sustain the city going forward in those two years. And overall, if you look at the gains and losses in, in, in the, in revenues that were available to us year over year over year, on an average basis, it's about $1.6 million a year, and $1.6 million a year is very difficult to be able to achieve your vision on. So, I point those things out to you because I'm, I'm just very cognizant of the fact that, you know, interestingly enough, I was reading a Barron article this morning, it's like, you know, some things, sometimes these things just come up at the right time. And it's talking about the fact that good economies are all alike. When it's good, everybody is good. It, you know, you don't think about things, you just go forth, and it's good. But bad economies, you know, when it's, but every bad economy is bad in its own way. If you go back and you look at the recessions over the last 40 years, every single recession has, has a different catalyst that actually drove the recession. And today, the recession that's being driven today is inflation. Inflation is driving that recession that will likely hit us at the end of this year. But at the same time, there's an awful lot of other things that are hanging out there. I remember when concrete was at its highest cost, when a, a country that was halfway around the world was building its, its Olympic Village. And so, they were taking most of the concrete, and so, we had, you know, a deficit of concrete in the state, and the cost of doing business went up drastically at that period of time. Not sure that it ever really came down that much when they stopped building in China. So... So, with that, on the ad valorem effects, we've gone back, we've recalculated what the average assessed value of the property in the city of Cape Coral is on a homesteaded basis. Comes out to $274,427. So, taking that into account, and going back one year with the understanding that for homesteaded properties in fiscal year, in this current year, there's a 3% increase in value, taxable value. So, we've taken that into account, moved this forward, and at the rollback rate, you would see a $146 decrease if you're at that value. And at our proposed rate, you would see a $104 decrease. So, regardless of which rate you choose, and, you know, other than the 6.25 rate, you're going to see a decrease in your property taxes, you're likely to see a decrease in your property taxes, if you are homesteaded year over year. For the non-ad valorem, or the non-homesteaded properties in the city, at the, at the, at the preliminary rate of 5.5568, as well as at the rollback rate, you see decreases across the board, even for non-homesteaded properties, which are subject to a no greater than 10% increase in value year over year. So, some of the things that lie ahead for us, not only do we have the utility expansion program that lies ahead for us, but we also have a number of infrastructure projects. At some point in time, we're going to have to do some roadwork in order to widen roadways. You know, the congestion in the roadways today, especially on some of the smaller four-lane roadways, can be pretty bad. The, we have future things for fire to do, we got Fire Station 10, we have an administrative headquarters that the city council decides to fund it. We also have, you know, a potential $25 million or more fleet facility to be funded. And so, I look at these things, and on the park side, you know, we do have the Coral Oaks master plan, potential $15 million or more. But we also have a number of different parks that need to be, you know, upgraded. We also have the Yacht Club to look at, as well as, you know, if we're going to do any of the ULI recommendations, or even our own Parks Master Plan recommendations of putting in community center facilities in the four quadrants of the city. Those items are not here, but they, we need to be cognizant of the fact that those are recommendations. I don't think there's a city of 200,000, 200,000 or more or less in the state of Florida that doesn't have at least one community center, except for the city of Cape Coral. So, in order, and I, and I say to you that, you know, in order for us to meet these challenges, in order for us to be able to do some of these things, although impact fees will pay for some of this, impact fees will not pay for all of it. We haven't adjusted impact fees in 15 years, so they're not going to be paying for anything, a lot of anything in the future right now. As well as, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, in order to meet those, you know, these challenges for tomorrow, we're going to need to prepare today. With the right, with the right resources in place today, we can be able to meet some of these challenges in the future. And I would do want to say that, you know, there certainly is a number of things here, and, and, and you can't meet everything with debt, because there's a point where you can't pay for the debt. So, the, some of these will be able to be able to be paid for debt, but they're not at all going to be able to be paid for debt, paid with debt. And so, we can go into the budget stabilization reserves unless the city council wants to just talk about the things that I just talked about? Go forth and finish up the presentation? Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that agreed with everyone else?
Yes.
All right.
All right. So, you've seen this slide before a couple of times. So, you know, we talked about this. We're going to be drafting up these, these policies for you in short order once we've finished with this particular meeting today. But overall, the, you know, we want the city council to adopt a policy that requires a structurally balanced budget. What that means is that current revenues will cover current expenses. We don't go back and we don't utilize recurring, one-time revenue sources to fund recurring expenditures because they're not sustainable going into the future. At least one-time revenue sources are generally not sustainable in the future. We also recommend, and continue to recommend, that you establish a budget stabilization reserve of three months of general fund expenditures. Now, as I pointed out to you, if three of the millage rates will get you to two and a half months, our, even our recommended rate will keep you at two and a half months, and the other two will get you to a three-month general fund expenditure, budget stabilization reserve. Although I recognize that, you know, we're not likely to get to those two millage rates, you know, I would like to be able to come to a consensus with the city council that we establish a three-year timeframe to get to this three months. You know, to, to, to get to the three months of general fund expenditures for the budget stabilization reserve. I'm not asking for the consensus right now. I'm, I'm really talking about the fact that I think it's very important for us, not only as a city, but as a, you know, as an organization, to be able to rely on these for not only better rates when we're out there borrowing money at, when we need to borrow money, but at the same time, we're covered when the time comes, when the big one actually hits us. And, you know, we all live on borrowed time when it comes to the big one. Okay? We're talking about a hurricane, sorry.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
The 3 million in reserves, or three months stabilization. So, that occurs in the fallback and the preliminary. Did you say that, or did I mishear?
It, it, it occurs in all three. The rollback, fallback...
It doesn't occur in the rollback, does it?
It does.
It's two and a half.
It does. Two and a half.
But if I want three, then it only occurs in the fallback and the preliminary?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was trying to...
No, if you want three, it only occurs at 6.25 and 5.9.
Right. Got it. Okay. I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, again, you know, we're looking at the budget stabilization reserve would replace the unassigned fund balance policy as a minimum of two months of operating expenditures. We would name it, rename it, the budget stabilization reserve, and we would put it into a committed reserve. Committed reserve, meaning that basically, it takes the city council by, you know, an act of something in order to utilize those funds at some point in the future. And so, the question is, and, you know, again, I think I've already stated it, you know, at what level does the city want to be at? My recommendation as your finance director is that you're at three, three times expenditures. If we continue at 2.5 times expenditures for the next couple of two, three years, I don't think you're going to be hurt by that. But I do say that, you know, at some point in time, you're going to want to get to the three times. We've provided you some calculations, kind of give you an idea. We actually went through these same type of calculations last year when we were talking about fund balance and, you know, and reserves, and how much you had available for one thing or another. And this, this particular calculation, you know, you start out with whatever your fund balance that you brought forward in fiscal year 2022. This is the number that we brought forward. Overall, we brought forward adjustments from the actual, from the audit of about $22.4 million. This is the excess revenue over expenses that apply, that were, that occurred during, from fiscal year 2021. We don't expect these numbers to be this large going forward, because we're no longer in the COVID, heck, I almost said the other one, sorry. But we're no longer in the, in that COVID world. So, at least not to the extent that we were in, in, towards the end of 1920, 21. And so, you know, overall, we would expect that the majority of the expenses that we budget for will be expensed during the course of the year. But at the same time, we also take a conservative approach towards revenues. So, you know, from a practical standpoint, we will collect at least 100% of the revenues, if not over just a little bit of that. And so, we actually plan to have excess resources annually, but it doesn't always happen. Prior to 2019, it didn't happen for a couple of years. 2018, you had a, you had a big hit from Irma. So, you spent down a lot of resources in general fund in order to fund recovery from Irma. And so, you didn't see a $22 million, you know, bring forward, you know, you actually saw an $8 million loss. And so, in the prior year, it was some number less than that, I would say about $35,000. But overall, that's what you, you know, that's, that's actually more the norm than it is the, you know, you want smaller numbers. And that's what our goal is. And so, you, we have those numbers. So, the surplus deficit, you know, we represented these one-time uses in fiscal year 2022. We brought forward and used $18.7 million of the, of these resources. So, you now, you have a fund balance available of the net between those two, and, you know, it brings you down to about $94 million. So, these numbers are fairly consistent across, when you're talking about the budget stabilization reserve, you're dealing with whatever, whatever preliminary budget that we dealt with at the time. We've given you some really big pieces of paper up there to kind of... We've given you some really big pieces of paper up there to kind of give you an idea what that is, what the core budget was, when we talk about the, any of the addition of the, of the resources that we're looking to add into the system. You know, so the budget stabilization reserve is actually calculated on whatever that number is. At this point in time, I think the overall expenditures for at 5.4631 and forward was about $194 million at the rollback rate, because there was a decrease in the cost, because you're not receiving as much under the rollback rate. It was a slightly smaller number at $193 million. So those are what we're actually looking at. And so then you take that budget stabilization reserve, you look at, you know, then what your unassigned fund balance will then be, and what we're proposing to use out of that unassigned fund balance in the current year, we're looking at using $16.9 million. That's what we developed a budget on. And if you're looking at five points, if you're looking at the rollback rate, you really don't, you do have some wiggle room. You've got about $1.2 million available at the two and a half months, if you leave it at two and a half months. But at the same time, if you go to two months, if that's the goal of the City Council, go to two months, then you have $9 million of excess reserves that you can use to fund various one-time improvements within the city. At the same time, if you were to go to three months while at the rollback rate, we would have to come up with $6.8 million to put towards those numbers. So that's what the whole goal of this exercise was, was to show you what the impacts were, depending on what rate you were using, and what the availability was utilizing those rates. So again, all things being equal, you can see, you know, that you have a negative number at the, you know, three lines up from the bottom, at three months for those particular three rates, indicating that you would have to take resources from current resources in order to fund three months. When you're looking at, because you have additional revenues coming in for the three months associated with the, with these resources, you can actually increase and get to three months because of those additional resources at these particular millage rates. Okay. One-time expenditures. So I just want to remind the City Council, we do have a policy. It's a financial policy the City Council adopts by resolution that states that the city will not fund ordinary municipal services with temporary or non-recurring revenue sources. Again, this is a policy that will be replaced with a structural balanced policy, structurally-balanced budget policy, which basically says the same thing, that you're funding current operations with current revenues, and you don't use one-time resources for, or you don't use temporary or non-recurring revenue sources for ordinary municipal services. So as you'll recall, we provided you a list of items that we recommended that we use the one-time resources for, and those are the items that are in blue, in white, actually. Those were the original items that we recommended to the City Council to use these one-time resources for. We went through an exercise, we came up with a parking lot, we went back to the parking lot, we made some adjustments, and we've, in order to fund those adjustments that the City Council has directed us to put in here that are in green, we had to take away from some of the things that we recommended in order to achieve that. So some of the things that we did recommend that are no longer in the one-time funding would be the budget software and maintenance, it would be the crime center equipment and construction for the police department. We would reduce the overall parks renewal and replacement funding to, as an attempt to bring our parks, the existing parks, not the newly constructed parks, but the existing parks, at least up to a level that, you know, they could be comparable to the new existing parks. Arts Master Plan would be, would not be funded. We would not fund the sports complex parking lot design. We would not fund the tree canopy study. We would not fund the business license tax study. And the intersection improvements that we recommended, that we would go out and do, where we're putting in new mast arms for intersection signalization, we would not be funding either. And of course, last but not least, the community needs assessment would not be funded as part of this program. So some of the things that we did add, we had added additional funding for sidewalks, the Safe Pass to Schools program. We also provided some of the, this is additional funding on top of what we originally proposed at 1.25 billion, so we got it up to $2.5 billion. Median improvements at $2 million. That's on top of the $312,000 we set aside in the general fund on an annual basis. Parks, putting in some boat ramps and various pocket parks. I think the Public Works Director sent you all an email yesterday, kind of give you an idea of where some of those will be. Also funding the Fire Station 10, funding for the design of Fire Station 10. We would look at increasingly for an impact fee study, adding money in for an impact fee study for $100,000. Pine Island Road PD&E, as we discussed at length at the budget workshop, or sorry, the budget retreat, and as I recall, Councilmember Hayden had just attended a meeting the day before, there was discussion about the city fronting the money for the PD&E in order to move the Pine Island Road corridor improvements along with the state of Florida. So we've contacted the state of Florida, and we, you know, talked with them, and they basically told us that they really wouldn't need the money in their hands until fiscal year 2024 for us. Same for them, but it's, you know, but closer to us for, talking about November, December timeframe of next year, 2023. So, but by putting it here, we ensure that the funding is available for us and not have to scramble for the money. We do have an option. We can split fund it this year, we can fund half of it this year and fund half of it next year. You know, those are options that we can talk about. Thank you very much, Councilmember. And we also funded Oasis football field design and engineering. But, you know, just as a reminder, you know, that if we're going to fund these studies, we're going to fund some of these things, you know, at some point in time, we'll have to come up with the resources in order to actually build them in the future. So, you know, we're still on track for doing the CAD software. We're expecting that, that, you know, we originally set aside $3 million. We believe it's going to be closer to about 3.8. Some of this is split funded through the FSA versus the, versus the, so, versus property taxes. So we're, you know, we're actually split this a little bit and reduce the amount that we would be taking from the one-time funding from the general fund, and take it from the one-time funding associated with the FSA, because there is resources associated with the FSA that is restricted for this type of use. And so we go on to almost the last one. Yes, sir?
Just one question on this. So this one-time expenditures and fund balance is based on what millage rate?
It doesn't matter what millage rate it is. These are resources that are available to us that are leftover from net revenues over expenditures from fiscal year 2021.
Okay.
So this number can be used with all five millage rate scenarios. Okay. So at the budget retreat, there was a question on whether or not we wanted to increase the water and sewer rates as, at the time, because I had informed you that we had built the budget with the assumption that, with the City Council's approval of moving forward with the UEP, they basically approved the 3% increase that was identified as part of the programming for moving forward with the UEP. So we built the budget with a 3% increase in water sewer, in water and sewer rates. And so there was a question about that, and there was also a question about, well, how do we fund the transmission and the plant costs when we're doing a UEP project? So I'm going to go through some of that here with you today, just to remind, and just as a, you know, as a, well, for no other reason, as an education about how the UEP is done. Okay? So as you'll recall, we presented the UEP, or the Utility Master Plan, to you in February of '23 of this year at a committee of the whole meeting. At the time, we had to go back, and we came back, and we had a further discussion about the UEP, but this is when we presented it to you. Estimated cost of the utility program, utility extension program at the time was discussed. Overall, we're talking about about $5 billion over the term in order to take the UEP to its logical conclusion, which I think is utility area 12. And so to do that in the short term for us, the cost between fiscal year 2022 and 2026 is about $921 million. A portion of that is funded through the assessments of $337 million, and a portion of it is funded through the non-assessed, in this particular case, utility-supported and impact fee-supported at $526 million. And then we have other funding sources, such as stormwater, roads, you know, the gas tax revenue in order to do some of the roadways in those areas, as well as some grants, depending on if we get any grants for the area, or these areas. So we also took into account the fact that utility operations, maintenance, and renewal and replacement would be estimated at about $75 billion over the same period. So we have planned adjustments that was presented to you, and we're in the process of going through another, a rate analysis as well. And, but at the same time, we, when we presented this to you, we presented a planned adjustments to smooth these rates in the future. So overall, we would be looking at 3% per year for the next 18, 19, 20 years. You know, then that actually ends up lessening the impact in the immediate term on the existing So there are two parts to the utility extension program, as I briefly stated before. Distribution lines, these are the small lines, 10 inches and less. These are on, these are part of the per parcel assessments. Then we have the transmission and the plant costs. These are the lines that are much larger than 10 inches, the, and up to, I don't know, 50 inches, 80 inches. These are the transmission lines, and then, of course, we have the plant cost, if we have to expand any of the plants, if we have to do anything with the plants, you know, to accommodate any of the new areas. As you're aware, we'll end up having to expand the water plant in the north, and we intend on rebuilding the water plant in the south, and we'll have to put a new wastewater treatment plant in the north as well. But those are years in advance of us, they're not within the next three months, or the next, actually, the next five years. So we're giving you the estimates of the north one west only, to give you an idea, and I'll reiterate again, these are estimated costs because they're not final, we haven't bid them, but these are estimated. So when you're looking at the water transmission, the wastewater transmission, and the irrigation transmission, where overall, it's about $56.5 million estimated, the estimated capital expansion fees based upon our current rates, without any adjustment, would be about $28.6 million. Because of that, the rates or the cost of the excess at $27, $28 million would end up being picked up by the ratepayers. And that's how this works. In some cases, you might get, if we had brand-new impact fees in place that would cover the future costs that we've identified for future years, it would have been 100% funded, but we're not at that point, because we haven't changed the rates, we haven't changed the impact fees for water and sewer since 2007. So if you recall, this nice little chart that was built by Stan Tech was included in the Utility Master Plan study. It shows you that there's a 3% rate increase each and every year through 2041. This is the smoothing of the rates, assuming that all other things being equal, everything that we've planned for comes in the way it's expected to be planned. We don't have unexpected increases in electric rates that were not planned for, and other things like that. And so when it comes to the financing of the debt, financing of utility revenue bonds, you know, we'll fund, you know, we'll basically, we'll be utilizing utility revenue bonds to fund all the UEP improvements. And so anything that's not covered by prepaid either capital facility expansion fees or the assessments, you know, then we would actually fund whatever that, whatever those differences are. So we have a program, we go out there, we offer property owners in the last two assessment areas, and if they want to prepay their capital facility expansion fees, we'll give them a discount. They can prepay it, and they're, off they go. If they don't, they finance it over a period of time, which I think was six years, and, you know, you still get the resources a little bit earlier and be able to apply those towards the cost of the improvements for the transmission and the plant costs. Water and sewer revenues are a direct pledge for utility revenue bonds. In addition, water and sewer revenues are a backup pledge for assessment bonds. This is how we're able to go out there and sell the assessment bonds. Otherwise, yes, ma'am?
Sorry. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In the northwest that we just did, Unit 58, 59 in that hole, that was a fairly wealthy area to pay assessments. Has there been any projection or any thought as to how the prepayment and the payments are going to go in the next section, which is a lot of lower-valued income properties?
We have some ideas, and when we're prepared to come back and actually talk about the assessment, assuming that we adjust the rates, then we'll be able to talk about some of those ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
But yes, we have considered them. Yes, yes.
The capital facility expansion fee has been the same since the beginning?
It's been the same since 2007.
So any UEP from 2007 has paid the same capital facility expansion fee? It's been the same number?
Yes.
Or does that vary depending on the cost of the project?
The only, the only changes that have been made are changes between irrigation and water, and sewer, as a matter of fact, but it's all stayed the same at 6750 regardless.
So would we be able to lower the rate fees if we raise the UEP capital expansion?
The possibility exists. I won't give you a guarantee on it, but we're not, since the plan that you see here doesn't take into account any increases in impact fees, it would have an impact, whatever that might be. But we're in the process of doing a study for the utility impact fees, we'll be bringing them back at some point. Statutorily, the legislature has restricted how these go into effect, you know, when they go into effect, how long it takes you to put them into effect. I mean, you know, the legislature doesn't, you know, whatever.
So at the time that we do that, would we be able to reduce the rate increase for the water bills?
I think it's probably more of an avoidance of future rate increases, but they're not going to change what you've already put into effect. Because remember, impact fees are only paid on new construction, and, or, in this particular case, because they're cooking up to a system that they didn't have before, they would pay it as well. But for the most part, impact fees usually happen with new construction. We have a mechanism in place where we assess the actual, the UEP, I mean, the capital facility expansion fee as well. And so that gives us the opportunity to go out there and pre-fund some of the transmission costs that we didn't actually do in previous assessment areas. We started that program in, I don't know, 2013, when you did Southwest 67.
And Mark, in the overall scheme of how many permits we've brought in this month, or just in the first six months, a lot of it is well and septic, so there's not water and sewer impact fees?
Correct. To be honest with you, I don't actually know that for a fact. I don't know where the permits have been pulled.
Well, just drive around and you know. That's not rocket science there. The rest is yours, but that's not. So that water and sewer impact fee is only where utilities are, and the bulk of the permits at the moment are.
Right. And those that we're collecting are actually going towards the cost of the debt service that we already have in place.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
So as a reminder again, you know, water and sewer revenue bonds are a backup pledge for the assessment revenue bonds. If they weren't a backup pledge, and you only went out there on the assessments themselves, I'm pretty sure that you wouldn't be in the A category for those assessment bonds, and the rates would be much higher. Rates must be sufficient to provide for the debt service coverage, and that is pursuant to our bond covenants. And then, of course, without rate adjustments to sustain the debt service coverage in the future, I don't think the UEP can continue. That's, you know, that's my professional opinion about, you know, what I understand about how we do business, and as far as the assessments are concerned. And so in a recap, see, we're almost done. I mean, I feel pretty good, it's less than an hour and a half. I mean, I feel pretty good, it's less than an hour and a half. So, so in a recap, again, we're looking at determining the budget stabilization reserve level target. The millage rate that we have proposed at 5.5568 maintains it at, at 2.5 times expenditures for fiscal year '23. We would like consensus from the city council to establish a policy within our financial policies, you know, to, a goal of to achieve three times expenditures over the next three years. Agree on one-time expenditures, make sure that we're all on the same page. If nothing changes, we're all good. Set water and sewer rate adjustments at the, at the 3%, and then establish a target operating military. And so last but not least, we give you the average impact to the average homeowner, homesteaded property owner at 274,000, whatever that is. Although we'll be bringing back the fire service assessment next week on the 27th, I can tell you that on a preliminary basis, based upon the current budget, the fire service assessment would increase $19. Solid waste fee is looking at an increase of $40 per household. The primary reason for that is we're looking at a larger increase, or an inflationary rate increase request from Waste Pro within the, within the terms of their contract. And stormwater fee, the city council agreed several years ago in order to create, increase the stormwater fee $5 per year, so that is also included. So at the rollback rate, the, at this average homeowner, at this particular value, you would see an $81, $82 decrease. At the fallback rate, it'd be $61. At the preliminary budget rate, it'd be $40. And if they went with the half-back and the no-charge rate, you'd actually see an increase. So I'm done. So we're here for questions and answers. Q and D.
Just one quick question before I open up the floor. With the five proposals that you brought today, can you give us a, because I couldn't find that in, in the information that you provided, an overall dollar amount for the budget? The one preliminary budget that we started with about two months ago, the FY '23 preliminary budget was 943 million. Can you tell us what these five proposals that you presented, what the overall budget will be?
The overall budget?
Yes.
Not just the general fund? Because that, I mean, really, it only impacts the general fund.
You gave us was specific to the general fund?
Correct.
And I appreciate that?
Yeah.
But I was trying to decide with those five scenarios, what the overall budget dollar amount will be?
I'll have to get back with you. We didn't calculate it.
Okay. All right.
You may have it before the morning's over, but we're working on it.
All right. I guess I'll start with, with the discussion and then open the floor up from there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking, last time we all set our piece first, and then the budget review weighed in on some things. You think maybe this time we can hear what they say, in case we have other...
You want to start with them first?
I would prefer to hear what they have to say, and then we can ask our questions.
All right, let's do that. We'll give you guys the first opportunity.
Do you want to start, Tom?
I wrote down, I'm sorry. I got one down here, I just don't know how to turn on. There you go. Okay, I, I was just writing down a few questions as I went home, do you want me to run through those?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mason, I don't know, I just got questions. If you go back and bring up your charts, I could show you where my question is.
What page are you on?
I'm on page seven right now.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear? Does that work better? Yes? No?
Maybe give them the microphone.
Yeah, maybe just the microphone.
See if that's better.
You know how to hold that? Now, can you hear me now? How about that? No? The expert's coming. Hello? Sheena, do you know how to work? Oh, I think I got it.
I got both ones. Turn that one on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that one's working, this one's not. Logistics, being first. Okay, how about that? Yep. There we go.
While Mark's bringing up the chart, if we go to page seven, now, LPAC fuel adjustment impacts, there was a lot of, obviously, our fuel cost has gone up for city use, but our revenue's gone up. That's a 12%, tax franchise fees is a percent. Our PSD tax is going to go way up, too. I don't know if they offset each other.
The, just as an FYI, the public service tax is not applied to any increases in the fuel cost adjustment charges.
Oh, okay. I just thought it was a percentage of your bill.
It's not.
Okay. What about the, there's no franchise fees on that either?
In that, no. The franchise fees are, I'll have to go back and look at that one, but I don't think it's going to be much. We have a very small franchise fee. So if there's any increase, it's going to be minor.
Okay, and then, then, next bullet there on the second, or the bottom second bullet, pension contribution. How is our pension covered? A lot of cities rate their pensions as a percentage of the annuity value. Are we 100% at the level of funding for that? 80%? 60%?
We're all more, all three pension plans are more than 80% funded.
Even though the potential losses that you're talking about here, they're still 80%?
I don't know what they're going to be, you know, until an actuarial study is done, based upon whatever those losses will be, but today, they are all more than 80% funded.
And, and that's considered pretty good, right?
It is.
Okay, so that was my other question, just that, to find that out. 80% is really good. Okay, am I, on the next page eight, I was a little confused again, if you could talk a little bit about charges for services and then internal service charges, those values, where they come from?
Charges for services are for services for outside includes planning fees and includes the charges for service for using the parks, for whatever those might be. We have a, a lot of different fees that go, that are associated with this. Internal service charges are charges that we charge to internal service funds. In this particular case, we charge the utility fund for services provided by the general fund, in this case of payroll, you know, accounting services that we charge to, you know, this, this, you know, the, if they went out and they hired their own, they would still have to pay the fees, so they're paying us for that service.
Okay, is that the allocation from the...
That is the allocation.
Okay. All right, thanks. And then the transfer in, the last one, what's that?
We have various transfers in to the general fund to support the, I have to go back and look exactly which ones they are, but I'll have that answer for you in just a minute.
Okay, I'm going to page 11 now, sorry, I didn't have a chance to summarize all this yet. It looks like there's a $7 million, if you want to get to page 11. You have a $7 million increase in millage value from the, just looking at the rollback and FY '22. So that's a $7 million increase, although you're, the charts you show, everyone that's either homesteaded or non-homesteaded is going to get a tax reduction. How do we get that extra $7 million in addition to the reduction that everybody's going to get in taxes? How does that, where's that money delta?
Okay, so, you know, the property values, every property in the city is valued annually. If you are a homesteaded property, regardless of what your, your valuation is, your valuation could have went up $200,000, but you're only going to see a 3% increase in your taxable value. Okay? That's for homesteaded properties, maximum 3% or whatever the actual CPI is on a, on an annual basis. If you're non-homesteaded, you're going to see a maximum 10%. So again, if you only go out, if you go up 200,000, you're only going to see a 10% increase in your taxable value. So your real value, your just value is one thing, your taxable value is something else, and it's limited by whatever that increase is. If you build a new home, you had a tax, you had a taxable value on vacant land of X, we'll call it $10,000, whatever that might have been, and then when you build a new home, and the new home goes on, on the tax rolls, we'll assume the cost of the new home was $400,000, and, you know, the new cost of that home would go on, on the tax rolls at $300,000, and if it's homesteaded, that's basically the, the base rate, and then you'd only increase annually from that point forward. So when you're talking about this $7 million, you know, going from one year to the next year, it's not a matter of, you know, we've built a lot of homes that were CO'd during the course of the, last year, you saw $1.2 billion in new construction value added to the tax rolls. That $1.2 billion is what equates out to much of the $7 million, it's actually 6.9 million, but, you know, whatever that number is, it equates out to much of that. So it's basically new construction, especially when you're looking at the rollback rate, assuming that it's the rollback rate, it's designed to recover the same amount of revenue as the prior year, including growth. And in this case, the growth was 1.28 billion, thereabouts. So new construction hits, hits the books, you start new if you're, if you're homesteaded, if you're non-homesteaded, you start new with a new base rate. If you're already homesteaded and it's year over year, you're going to see no more than a 3% increase in your overall taxable value, which means you would only see a 3% increase in whatever the tax rate is, multiplied by that taxable value. So if it was stated 2.6, 2%, because you went up 3%, you would see a 3% increase in your property tax revenue, or the property taxes. If you went down from that 6.2%, whatever that number is, you would see a decrease, and the time that you would actually go into the negative is when you've lowered your millage rate by at least 3%. Does that answer the question?
Kind of, I, I guess, I understand the growth piece, but I, I guess there's still a section of people that are missing our houses. Is it the prior years that aren't in the homesteaded or non-homesteaded value yet, and then this year's is the growth? Are those two numbers which make up that extra $7 million? Am I missing something?
It makes up the difference between the growth piece and the actual amount at this particular rate.
Okay. And then just for apples-to-apples comparison, that in the FY '22, it's 110 million, that was at a 96% budget. Are these other numbers gross, or are they also at 96%?
All 96%.
Okay, I'm just going, quick question on number, chart 13. FY '22, is that the gross tax, 114, 641? That's prior to the, that's not actual money, right?
That's, that's gross taxes, that's not at 96%.
And that's, did we, we don't know if we're going to achieve that or not, or it's still a question?
We're not going to achieve 114 million. No, we're not. It was never planned. We budgeted for 110 million, we would expect to get maybe 111 million.
I had one more question, I think. You had leftover, not sure what page it was on. Oh, there it is, page 19. You had the second line there where we had an underrun of 22 million in last year's actuals. And I've been stating, we're going to probably underrun somewhere around 18 to 20 million this year because of conservative budgeting, which I'm not opposed to, but you got to recognize that that's probable. So it's hard to understand, you know, where are the real numbers of what it costs the city when our budgets are, you got this much pad in them, plus we got a huge amount of reserves, and it's not clear, I don't know if you have an estimate yet of where we, our actuals are going to be for this year, that we're going to have for one-time expenditures that we could talk about.
I do not expect an underrun of $18 million. So, you know, the best I can do for you today, but I expect it to be less than that.
But still, I think we're underrunning 200 people to the budget, so that's going to be a lot of money saved.
That's 200 people to the entire budget for all funds. That's not necessarily just the general fund, and it doesn't necessarily say which ones we've increased, doesn't also talk about where we bring them in as far as, you know, hiring is concerned. So there's a number of factors that go into the number of underrunning, because we have, I don't know, a little over 80 funds, of which, of those funds, you know, about, about 10 and 12 of them have people in them, and so, you know, there's a lot that goes into, into account when looking at underrunning the number of positions that we have, and whether some of those positions are full-time or whether they're part-time, or contract, I think we call it, so.
You're saying you're holding money in a go-bond for overruns. Although the council moved the $11 million of the yacht club out of the go-bond expenditures, wouldn't that be enough to cover all the other parks overrun without holding other money back?
We are. It's about $15 million right now.
Of expecting overrun?
I don't know how much, I do not, I, I think it's important to recognize, we don't know what the overrun is. We have a number of projects that are still out there that are being evaluated by the Corps of Engineers, DEP, and who got, no, God knows who else, you know, that are holding us up, being able to go out there and do some of these projects. Every single year, these projects, every single month, these projects probably go up in cost, and so we need to be prepared for that. At the time that we went out, you know, it, I don't, I don't think anybody ever expected it would take this long with some of these regulatory agencies to take this long to issue us their, their permits. So we have four fairly large projects that are going to, that are on hold right now because of that. So when we get done with those, we'll figure out what the actual cost is. We have the resources, depending on what that underrun is, we'll figure it out, and we'll be back before the city council to explain what we need to do to, to achieve building these or not.
Okay. My last question is just on the one-time expenditures, page 23. Got a couple of things in there that, you know, we had a, a master parks plan, we're building right now 10 new parks, not, one of them had a football field or an aquatic center in them, so either we are going to, why are we adding more money for those if the whole master plan, which did the extensive discussion with our citizens on what was important, that none of that was in there? And now we're going to spend money, how do we know what the citizens really want in those areas? If your bible is the master park plan, and that's, wasn't a high priority in, in that plan? Are we going to redo that plan? Or are we going to assess that someone's saying, hey, I want this, it's a smart thing? How do we know our 200,000 residents want this? That's it.
Thank you. Good morning, Mark, and thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of quick questions, and I'm looking forward to a time where we can all kind of discuss this at length. For the charter school financial sustainability, on page four, it says that the revenue sources are fines and miscellaneous. Does that include the half-cent tax that was already passed? Is any revenue from that going to the charter schools?
No.
Okay.
That half-cent recognition?
Yes, sir.
Is it the school district?
Yes.
The school district, until now, has elected not, I'm sorry.
Not to share any of those revenues with the charter school.
Okay, and pardon my ignorance, but who's in charge of that decision? Would that be the, the school board?
The school district.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Um, let's see here. On page 15, where we've itemized sort of the wish list for the future, under the parks and recreation category, I see where there's an allotted 15 million for the Coral Oaks and recreation category, I see where there's an allotted 15 million for the Coral Oaks golf course, and then 60 million for the yacht club and everything else is to be determined. Have those jobs been bid out at all, or are those, those would still need to be bid out and put a price tag on those?
No, this is, none of these have been bid out yet, this is simply just a list of all those projects that we have been in some sort of discussion, either with the community or the city council. These are projects that we know that either must be accomplished or are desired, right? There, there could be a want versus a need, and so this list is designed to capture both needs and wants.
Okay, so we're kind of flexible on this for the budget that we're talking about and possibly for the future, there's maybe some?
Yes, well, these are all projects that are essentially unfunded.
I'm sorry?
These are all projects that are unfunded.
Unfunded at this time, okay.
At the moment, with, the yacht club is kind of an outlier, but for the most part, everything else are needs and wants that are out there, but we have not identified the funding resources necessary for them, or we have not plugged them into a, the five-year capital program or a future-year operating budget.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, did you say that the yacht club 60 million was funded?
Um, not in its entirety, um, what, we've had conversations with the council in terms of, there's $10.9 million right now in the parks' general obligation bond for the yacht club. However, we've had changes in the scope, and we know that the cost is actually going to be closer to $60 million. Council gave us authorization to explore financing that entire project, and thus freeing up the $10.9 million. But that won't be resolved until we get our permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, we can finish designing it, and then we can actually get bids for it.
Gotcha, okay. Um, let's see. And then, um, the other only question I have right now is on the one-time expenditures, and pardon my ignorance if I'm supposed to know this, but could you just give me an example of maybe what that would include, like, what that would be, what we would spend on a one-time expenditure that's not already outlined in the itemization of our priorities?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it, Mark, if you don't mind. A one-time expenditure is essentially a, um, a project that, it, it's basically one time, it's a study, it's a capital project, it, it, one and done, that's it. As opposed to, let's say, hiring 10 police officers, that's a recurring cost. If you want to build a police building, that's a capital, and you can either fund it all at one time, pay as you go, or you can borrow money.
Okay, so typically, is what we spend in any given year in line with these numbers as far as one-time expenditures?
No.
Way under, we typically spend under?
Yes.
Well, in general, as I, you know, just pointed out, in, you know, 2018, you actually had a negative, you had an overrun by any other name, if you want to call it an underrun, overrun, uh, you know, to the tune of $8 million, so you didn't have the resources necessary in 2019 to be available to do that. It all went towards your, your, basically your, your reserves.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, my questions are not necessarily in here, because of my surgery, I had to miss some discussions, so I have just three items I'd like an update on, and one of them is the Bimini Basin mooring. Is that done, gone forward, canceled?
Bimini Basin mooring field is funded in this year's budget. Last Monday, the selection advisory committee reviewed responses to a request for proposals. They have, they shortlisted, they made a recommendation to me, I, last week, I authorized the committee to negotiate the final contract with the selected firm that is going to design and build it, and that contract award should be coming before council shortly, either in August or September.
Wonderful, for health and safety. What's the process of project of the Cape at 47 condo project downtown, is that in process, being built?
That project is still moving forward, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
They anticipate a groundbreaking sometime in August.
Perfect, thank you. My last one is, there any ongoing discussion about the old golf course?
Um, when you say discussion, what do you mean? Are there negotiations between the city and the property owner? At the moment, the answer is no, there are no formal negotiations. There's all sorts of activity taking place, and we continue to monitor their progress in meeting the environmental remediation requirements that are required.
Thank you.
It's on our radar screen.
Good mor, good morning, everyone. Mark, this is an excellent package, and I thank you for putting together something that's so easy to understand, therefore I shouldn't have any questions, but I just got a couple. Could you, I just didn't catch it fast enough, on page eight, is everything from intergovernor, intergovernmental revenues down, a, to use your word, take-as-is?
We receive estimates usually in July, some in June, mostly in July, of estimates from the state of Florida. So what's included in governmental, intergovernmental revenues are half-cent sales tax, the municipal revenue sharing from the state of Florida, communication services tax, generally are in those categories for intergovernmental revenues. We also receive, oh, okay, thought somebody was going to come up and tell me something. You're wrong, no. So, so we receive estimates from the state of Florida for those particular revenue sources, so, and, and do we see increases annually? The answer is yes. You know, as, as an example, you know, with all the construction industry, et cetera, that's been going on in the state of Florida over the last, you know, year, certainly sales taxes has increased significantly because all the resources that are used to build a house are, are subject to sales tax. So, you know, any of those sales taxes that are garnered here in the state, you know, would come back to us, whatever that, whatever our proportion is on a, on a, on our share based upon our current population.
So, is everything below that, internal service charges, the rest of the list, are those all take-as-is as well?
Yeah, pretty much, you know, the, again, we, we, as an, let me give you an example of take-as-is, what you're talking about. So, we have a franchise with LCEC, it's set at a particular percentage, and so what we rely on is the usage to drive the revenue.
Right.
And we can't adjust the 3%, so we can't go up to 4% if we wanted more revenue from the franchise fee, is what I'm trying to say to you. So our, what, so we have a fixed rate that drives whatever revenue that we receive on an annual basis. Since, you know, I can tell you that, you know, in talking to some of my folks, and frankly, in talking to my wife, when I saw the number that came through on the LCEC charge, I immediately went over to the thermostat and turned the doggone thing up, you know, so, you know, overall, what I'd like to do is decrease the amount that I'm paying to LCEC, not how much I'm, you know, I don't want to pay them anymore. So, you know, it's those kind of things that, you know, even though there might be an increase on franchise fees, because it might be a subject to the, the fuel charge, what I would expect that, is that when you see these increases, you're going to see a lot of decrease in usage. It happens when we increase water and sewer rates, there's a certain level of elasticity that goes with any rate increase regardless of what it is. When you increase rates, people decrease the usage. And, you know, whether they stay with that decreased usage over a period of time, or whether they, you know, just go back to habit and say, to heck with it, you know, I think I can afford whatever this adjustment is, sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't. So, when we're putting in, we're putting in place any increases in fees, as in, you know, if we're going to increase the, you know, the parks' fees, we would expect that, yeah, there might be a decrease in usage, you know, but how long will that last? And if we have enough resources that are coming in, new people coming in to pay, those new folks are going to be paying the new rates, and they didn't know what the old rates were. So, you know, those are all the things that we take into account when we're looking at future revenue sources, as well as, and evaluating future revenue.
So I was trying to make a distinction between charges for services, which I consider the park fees to be a charges for services.
Yes, they are.
Is it, is it correct to say charges for services are really city-provided, and city determines the fee?
Correct.
Or the percentage, or the rate?
Correct.
Whereas under the franchise impact licenses, a different party is determining that?
We actually negotiated the rate in many cases, and it's a fixed rate for a long period of time.
Thank you, thank you, that helps. I've just got to say that the information that you provided on page 13, it is really very helpful. Not living here back in 2007 and those time periods, it was very meaningful to see, we're just climbing out of that hole. And from a value, property value standpoint, I'd be really interested, see some other data that's kind of similar to that, but I just, I just want to thank you for providing that.
Sure.
Um, ooh, I skipped page 10, on page 10, I'm sorry, I don't know the acronym, ULI.
Urban Land Institute.
Thank you.
Urban Land Institute, yes.
I just missed that altogether. George told me it was a study, but I just didn't, okay.
It's a very good presentation.
I'm sorry, what?
It's a very good presentation, and it is online, we can get you a copy if you want.
Okay, yes, for our team? Sure, thank you. And page 15, I got those questions answered. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I think before we open the floor up, the council, we'll take about a 10-minute break, we'll come back at some, somewhere about 10:55. Meeting's adjourned, until then.[1318.42] We'll come back at some, somewhere about ten fifty-five. Meeting's adjourned until then. Bring the order, the meeting back to order. Before I get into some of my comments, I'll check with Mr. Mason again to see if you got that information that I requested earlier.
I most assuredly do. I have really efficient staff here. I didn't actually get the opportunity to really, you know, as Ms. Gruber was complimenting us on this nice presentation, it's these folks that put that together. You know, me, eye candy, that's it. So. So anyways, to give you the answers that you were looking for, if, at the rollback rate, the overall budget be nine hundred and thirty-nine million, fallback nine forty-one, preliminary nine forty-three, halfback nine fifty, max nine sixty-six, nine hundred and sixty-six million. Yeah, with the understanding that anything that's over and above what we've already proposed as far as a preliminary millage rate is concerned, you know, we haven't identified for any future expenses.
Okay. And the reason that I asked that question, as we all are aware, even though we adopt a budget for one particular year, we do have a three-year rolling budget for our projections for the next two years. And if you look back at our budget book from last year, we adopted a nine hundred and seventy-eight billion dollar, I'm sorry, a nine hundred and seventy-eight million dollar budget. And if you look what our projection was for FY twenty-three, the preliminary budget, it was nine hundred and forty-three million dollars. And that's why I asked that question, to kind of see where we are in line with where our projection was. So, our projection was nine hundred and forty-three million, the rollback rate's about nine hundred and thirty-six million, and at the high point is if we kept the millage rate the same, we'd be nine hundred and sixty-six million. I think that's important information to see how we are doing in our, in our projections for the future. Before I get into my comments regarding some of the items that was brought before us today, I wanted to make a couple comments. The comments are, as the elected body of this city, probably our most important decision that we make each and every year, and the biggest responsibility that we have is adopting a budget. Probably sing, the most single important decision that we will make throughout the year. So with that being said, I think that we have to make sure that we have all the information in a timely manner to make sure we can make that good informed decision. I'm a little disappointed today for the reason that we sit down in our chair to start our meeting and we have a great presentation that staff put together and I thank everyone's for their hard work. Unfortunately, the information that we got today, in my opinion, we should've got about two meetings ago. You know, some of us had meetings this week with the city manager and this presentation was basically presented, but for whatever reason, that information was taken back during our meetings. To me, I want all the information in a timely manner so I can make a good informed decision. To kind of give me a carrot and then take it back, I don't really appreciate that approach. So for the future, I would hope that not only myself, but all of council who makes the biggest decision that we'll make throughout the year, will get all the information. In my opinion, you don't give the information for two reasons. Either you don't want us to have all the information, or you're trying to manipulate exactly the direction that we may go in. Now, in our last budget discussion, I think at the end of the meeting, I asked the city manager, do you have direction, clear direction on where we should be going? And if I recall correctly, the response that we got at that time was, it appears that a majority of council have elected to go to the rollback rate and we will develop a budget and bring that budget back before you. I think that was, in summary, what he said. What we have here today are still five options. So, the way I see it, the direction that a majority of council gave in our last meeting, city staff did not bring a budget, or they brought us five budgets that kind of outlined that. But with all that being said, hopefully in the future, that process will be different. I think that the city manager and staff's responsibility is to give us all the information in a timely manner, give us the opportunity to review it, go through the budget book ourselves, make a good informed decision, and my decision may, may not equal the rest or some of my other colleagues up here, but at least give me the opportunity to do that. I don't think I've had that opportunity today. But with that, I will move on with the process, how it was presented to us, and I will make some comments. You know, one of the things that I asked for the last two weeks is, at the end of each budget year, there is a dollar amount that we are, either we break even in our budget, or we come up as a deficit, or we have extra money left over. Now, the discussion that I had with Mr. Mason this week was, we don't want to use that monies to forecast our next year's budget, and I agree with that, because we don't know what that number's going to be. But I do believe that you have to look back historically and see what that number is. As we all know, we budget for ninety-six percent of our budget. Hopefully, if we did our job correctly, there will always, hopefully, be some monies left over at the end of the year. So let's take a look at the last three years. What, what type of monies have we had left over at the end of the year for our budget? Twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-five point eight million dollars. In twenty twenty, we had fifteen point eight million dollars. In twenty nineteen, we had thirty-three million dollars left over. A total of seventy-four point seven million dollars. That's a lot of money that's still on the table. So when we have this discussion today, I think we have to keep that number in mind, because I think it's relevant. When you take a look at the parking lot items, you know, I think when you're talking about any budget, you have to decide what your wants and your needs are. That's what this discussion is about, wants and needs. What does the city have to have and what does the city want? Or maybe, how can we expand? That's that parking lot item. For me, I think a good policy moving forward would be, at the end of a budget cycle, that ends in September, maybe in November or December, we have a discussion on our parking lot items. See how much money we had left over. How good do we do in our budgeting, in our forecasted budgeting? Is there any money, money, any money left over? What can we spend that, maybe on items that, those one-time expenditures that was talked about here today? And if you look at the parking lot items, a lot of those items on there are wants. And I'm sure all eight of us sitting here would like to give our community every one of those items, but unfortunately, we can't do that. So we have to prioritize those each and every year to see exactly what we can do. Still identify our needs and then take a look at our wants. So when I look at the budgets, I take a look exactly what I think our needs are going to be first, just like we do at home. You know, of course, this budget is much greater than our budget at home, but a lot of the principles that we use at home, we should be using here today as well. So when I take a look at this, just like I talked about in our last budget meeting, in my opinion, I still recommend going to the rollback rate. And I think the other responsibility as an elected official that we have to answer on not only this topic, but any topic is the why. Why do I feel that way? Well, if you take a look at the numbers, for me, even if we go to the rollback rate because of growth, we're going to bring in an extra seven million dollars. So when you look at the, if you look at the chart that they provided, which shows the, the measurement on page ten, you know, if we go from the rollback rate to the fallback, it's nine million and additional two million dollars. I think, if I'm not mistaken, staff is recommending the preliminary rate of five point five. And that's a difference from seven to eleven million dollars. So we're about four million, the difference between those two, in our general fund, monies that we get. For me, I think it's easy to find the four million dollars. Look back at last year, we had twenty-eight, twenty-five point eight million dollars left over at the end of it, we're talking four. So when you look at these budgets, even all five, unless you look at the six point two five or the five point nine, they're fairly close. The three of them are fairly close. I feel that we have a responsibility to pass some of the savings on to our constituents. You know, we experienced a growth of twenty-three, over twenty-three percent in our assessed property values this year. And that's probably a record. But, you know, I think we budgeted for ten percent. So that there in itself should tell you there's some, some wiggle room. If you look at this next coming year, I think staff has budgeted for, a four percent increase. This year, it was ten. I think that's very conservative. My personal opinion is, we'll probably be closer to that ten percent that we budgeted for this fiscal year. But four percent is conservative, and of course, we always want to be conservative. I, I think the, the dollars are there. We revisit our parking lot items once we establish our needs for our community, have a discussion on those parking lot items, maybe in November, December, see how much money we have to work with, and then address our wants and prioritize those. Some of the other things, you know, that I looked at was our economic times that all of us are experiencing, including ourselves. Here, we're in a time where, we're over nine percent inflation. Gas prices are through the roof. That affects everything in our life. I went to the grocery store the other day and picked up a few items in a handcart and it was eighty bucks. How in the world a person making fifteen dollars an hour, how can they afford that? So you have to keep that in mind. You know, our electric bill just went up. So when you start adding all of these things up and you look at the impact that it has on our community. on our community, I think they're tightening their belt up. Mr. Mason even said today he's turning up his thermostat. And I think we need to do the same thing, to try to help out our constituents. We have to tighten that belt up a little bit. I still think we can provide a great budget. I think we can still provide the public safety element in our community. But I do think that we need to take a look at the wants that we have and prioritize that, and revisit that in a couple months, when we know exactly how much money that we have to utilize. So that's pretty much where I'm at. I haven't wavered much from our discussion, from our last budget discussion. I still support the rollback rate. We still have two and a half months' reserves. I do believe we, at some point, should strive for three. Maybe develop that strategic plan that Mr. Mason discussed to get to that 3%. But I think if you look at the numbers, you know, Mr. Mason, he spoke today for, you know, about an hour and 20 minutes, provided a great presentation. I just ask that maybe we do that a little earlier in the process, and give us the opportunity to look through that and really be able to dive into the budget book and the presentation so we can make a good informed decision. But my decision today hasn't changed, and I still will support the rollback rate. Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may respond to your question. I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm very deeply disappointed to hear that someone on city council would think that, or questioned the integrity and the professionalism of the staff, and of myself for that matter. The insinuation was made that, for some reason, when we sat down and briefed members of the city council, and we did not provide members of the council, it was because we were some, engaged in some sort of behavior that we were either hiding information from council, or that we were somehow trying to steer the direction of whatever decision that the council wants to make. I tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm very, very disappointed by that. That has never been an accusation that has been made against me, my behavior, and I've been doing this for a long time. And I know putting together a budget is challenging, nerves get frayed, there are lots of decisions that need to be made, but at no time did myself or any member of staff engage in any behavior that could be remotely considered to be unprofessional. So I have to tell you, I have to object to that, Mr. Mayor. With regard to not, the reason we did not give you this presentation upfront, when we met with all of you individually and shared the contents of this presentation, Mr. Mason said that he was still making last-minute tweaks to the presentation, and he wasn't complete. I didn't even have the full version of the presentation until this morning. So that was not an attempt by staff to hide any information from anybody. The fact of the matter is that it just wasn't complete. I know you want to move this earlier in the process, and we did, in fact, start the budget development project, process, earlier at your request, and at staff's request, because we don't want anyone to have any surprises, and we sure don't want to rush through putting together a billion-dollar budget, which is why we kicked off the budget process much earlier than we ever had, and we brought you into a workshop as early as January of this year. We had another budget retreat in June, and now we're having this one. We can't finalize the budget until we have the final certified values from the property appraiser's office, and that doesn't come out until July 1st. We can't change that. So when we put together, and at your request, and rightly so, and we supported the mayor and council on this, you actually wanted to, you wanted us to submit a preliminary budget. We thought that was a great idea, and we did that. And the preliminary budget is based on the June 1st estimate. That gives us a better idea of where we think the budget is going to go. And so we did have that budget workshop, and yes, Mr. Mayor, we presented a series of millage rate scenarios to you for your consideration, but by the time we got the certified values on July 1st, there was a significant difference between what we received on June 1st and July 1st. In fact, the total assessed valuation of the city increased by, I think, another $569 million, which affected the millage rates that we had discussed at the June workshop. So at the June workshop, I think we tossed about a estimated rollback rate that was somewhere around 5.4, I believe. Well, with the final certified values, that came in at 5.3, and we think that that was a significant change that you really need to be aware of. And so, when we set out to create these various millage rate scenarios, it wasn't for any purpose other than to make sure that all of you had all of the information that you need, pros, cons, projections into the future, give you a range of options, so when you do decide to give me the input, and all that we're doing here today is you're giving us the input so we can develop a proposed budget. You're not adopting the budget today. You don't get to do that until September, so we still have opportunities to make what I hope to be minor adjustments along the process, rather than blowing up the process, the budget after it's submitted, which, quite frankly, I have seen to be the way we do budgets here, and that's not, that's not the preferred way of doing a budget, is you do all the homework and the legwork at the very beginning, before you submit the proposed budget, and then you just make tweaks from there on out, rather than making significant changes. So, again, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this whole process is designed to engage you in input, in back and forth, so, again, so all of you can have the information that you need, we can have the information that we need, so we can put together a budget that hopefully you're comfortable and you're satisfied with. That's the only objective in any of this. And so I really, I have to apologize and object to any sort of behavior or inference that there's anything other, there's some sort of nefarious reason or behavior for us in either giving you information or not giving you information. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to say that.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to follow up first on the first topic that was discussed by the mayor, I mean, I'm of a similar opinion. You know, this kind of reminds me of when you go to buy a house, and you go to the closing table, and you sit down, and they slap a stack of documents about this thick on the table of all mortgage documents. You've never seen them before, but yet you're expected to, you're not going to go through them, and you can't change them, and you sign all the documents. So, this is a massive decision, I'm not going to reiterate that. So, the fact that we're here and we're given these documents, given an hour and 20-minute presentation, and then expected to make these decisions, I understand it's not the final decision, is confusing when you go against the fact that we're provided seven days' notice and materials for changing commercial use to multifamily housing, and those materials are provided to us well in advance, but then here we are today, just getting these now. The response given by the city manager was something to the effect of, "It wasn't ready." And I'm wondering, when in the past budget workshops that we've had, that we've got anything in prior to the day of the meeting? Has it ever been ready prior to the day of the budget workshops? Any of the materials that we've been presented? I'm not sure. So, I'm not sure that I buy into that. I certainly think that if we're aware that this is the date, that maybe we set a staff deadline of a couple days prior to make sure that that's done. But yeah, there's got to be something that changes in this process, because this isn't conducive to sound decision-making, in my opinion. With regards to the budget and the millage rate, a couple points. Again, I'm still of the same opinion that the rollback rate is a good decision at this point in time, given most of the factors that the mayor said. My reasoning is a little bit different, though, and I think, for me, it's to sort of change the thinking and the habits and to incentivize creativity, because last year, we didn't go to the rollback, and we created and we selected some of these parking lot items, and I'm questioning what we did, where we're at with those items. So we just heard an update, one of the items last year was the moorfield that was provided as a budgeted item in this year's budget. We're not even going to get to that point until this year's budget is created, based on the city manager's discussions with regards to the selection committee and how we move forward with that. JC Park, that was something that was included in last year's budget, I believe so, as far as the plans and the configuration and the design, where are we at with that? So, immediately, once the city manager and his staff heard that we were thinking about the rollback rate, all of a sudden, we decided that we found that we could save $1 million in the fleet management, for example, or the fleet department. So those sorts of things, those sorts of creative thinking, to me, is part of the reason of incentivizing this, to see, we might have maybe got a little lax with regards to the budget and the way that the money has been coming in, and not been thinking as creatively as we needed to be, because there were funds available to do these projects, and not incentivize us to reevaluate or look into things like the fleet department, where we could maybe be a little bit more feasible economically. So, that's part of the reason for me, and of course, again, just giving back to the taxpayer, I mean, I think that we've seen these last couple of years, some surpluses with regards to property values and increases, and now with regards to these times, it just makes sense, I can't justify taking more than I think we reasonably need. I've got every confidence in the staff to be able to do everything that we need to do to provide the citizens the level of service that they expect from their city at the rollback rate. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, Mr. City Manager, thank you for having this meeting. I'm going to take a different agreement than the other council members. I believe our first scheduled budget workshop that we approved last year was August 9th, so these previous budgets and these workshops we've gone to are actually extra. These weren't in our schedule originally, so not having this presentation a week before doesn't bother me, because these are workshops, these aren't voting meetings. So, I would appreciate it if it was a voting meeting, that we have the due diligence and the seven days, and I'm sure you'll give that to us when it comes time. The beginning of this meeting, you gave us four goals to help you develop the budget that you'll be presenting to us. One of them is establishing the target operating millage rate. So since this millage rate history is up on the screen, I want to explain to everyone, when you look at the boom we had back in 2006, which is similar to the boom we have now, the rollback rate was 3.6, yet the council still adopted a 4.87. When you look at the next year, the rollback rate on the downturn went up to 5.4, and the council still adopted to lower the rate to 4.76. And Ms. Tate was here in 2010, when they had to go from 4 to 7, because it was ugly. So, for us to look at a similar pattern and to see that the rollback rate is 5.3, which is a whole, almost a whole mill, lower than what we're at, yet previous council, because we're looking at history, never, you know, 2007, 2006, they were about 1.4 mills higher than the rollback rate. So us going to the preliminary budget, which is what we asked the city manager to do at 5.5, funds the budget that they've already pretty much done. When you look at the full rate, 6.25, I, even last year in the budget cycle, was not willing to keep it the same. I think we need to bring the rate down, whether it's bringing, it's not necessarily bringing the taxes down, but the cost of your taxes, I was always okay with keeping it the same. And at our meeting in June, that was around the 5.7 rate, I think is what the preliminary budget was, that comes down to 5.5 now. I was looking to do what I guess now is what they call the fallback rate, the 5.9, because the second question that we're here to discuss today is to determine the reserve level, and I believe 3% is a fair level, and if we can get to that this year, that's fine. That's the 5.9, that's where I'd like to be at. But, I am willing to go to the 5.5 to fund the budget as already presented, and then come up with a three-year plan. So as far as the reserve level going from 2.5 to 3, I'd like it done within three years, but I would prefer to do it this year. The other one is agree on one-time expenditures. I'll wait on that, I guess, because we're not, I don't want to go through all these. To me, the water and sewer rate adjustments, I don't think we have any option. It is what it is, kind of just have to bite the bullet on that and go with it. So, my minimum would be the 5.5. I would prefer to be at 5.9, or maybe even bring in something like 5.7 that funds some of the ULI study. We spent all this money on the ULI, we waited for it, we sat down, we had all the community involvement, and to take a rollback rate, which does nothing to progress the city to what they have requested, to me seems like we would have wasted money on the ULI study by going to the rollback rate. So, I'd like to at least keep it at the 5.5 at the bare minimum, but I would also like to look at the 5.7 and then consider the 5.9. So, and in no way do I think that we're doing the city any justice by going to the rollback rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there lights on, so anyone else want to jump in? Councilmember Hayden.
I guess I questioned a couple of our council members. I hope you're making your decision on what's best for the community and not your next vote. It's always difficult in an election year to make the right decisions for your community. I also question why the hell we did the vision, the strategic plan, and the ULI if we're not going to look at the future of our city? It's vision and its mission, which talks about enhancing the quality of life. You know, I don't, and I really thought, I really thought, in the next couple of years, this council could put the community in a position where we were looking at our future, growing our, growing our future, enhancing our future, having the ability that moves our community forward. But we continue to have the same old discussions where we can't look more than two feet in front of our face about what's happening in the future of our community. You know, I just don't, I just don't understand why this council can't have the vision, not the tunnel vision, to look at the future of this community and how we're going to prepare it for what's going to happen, for what's going to happen next. I would hope that the council members that have already spoke will take a look at the vision, will review our strategic plan, will look at what was discussed with ULI, because there's absolutely no reason to even do those studies or prepare that information if we're not going to use it. It'll just gather dust on a shelf somewhere, and to me, that's not, that's not right for this community. What happened at the workshop, the mayor mentioned something about a consensus for the rollback rate. If you look back at the discussion, there was one council member who was interested in the 5.7 at the time and suddenly changed to a higher rate. There was another council member that wasn't sure, so you could look at it as 6.2, or you could look at it as 4.4. So to me, the consensus was, bring me all the information that's needed for me to make the best decision possible, which was provided today with the halfback, the rollback, the higher rates than the rate that the city is recommended. So to me, you know, I've always been one that wanted all the information in front of me so we could make the best decision, to just to have presented us with a rollback rate scenario, to me, would have been wrong. We wouldn't have been privy to all the things that were necessary to make these decisions. We go to the rollback rate, unless we cut things that we know are wants and needs in this city, we're putting in jeopardy hiring extra firefighters, extra police officers, we're looking at a $17 million deficit. To think that all of a sudden, we had $74 million of extra money to spend over three or four years, isn't the case. So, you know, I think we have to, you know, really understand that, you know, I don't think our community, I think our community wants a high quality of life, and, you know, to save a few dollars on a rollback rate, to me, doesn't, doesn't bring that into fruition. I think keeping it at 5.5, it still offers a small discount, and it still puts us in a better position to plan our future with the wants and needs that we all said that, we all, we all wanted at the, at the last meeting, whether it was the PDNE study, whether it was sidewalks, whether it was medians, improving our future, sticking to it was sidewalks, whether it was medians, improving our future, sticking to what we agreed to on the strategic plan and how important that is. Mr. Mason started the discussion today with aligning the budget with our strategic and ULI plans. In some cases, we proceeded to throw that all out the window, and it makes no, makes no sense to me. So now, I'm at 5.5, 5.6, 8. I was at 5.7. The budget meeting, had talked about a little bit higher, but based on the fact that we can get a lot of the things accomplished that we have set out to do and plan our city's future, we can accomplish that at the 5.5, 5.6, 8 rate. So that's where I'm at, that's where I'll stay. I don't ever want to be in the position where I'm on this council for the next two or three years and face the possibility that I'll never vote for a budget. That, that truly bothers me, really bothers me. You know, I'm about the future of this city, planning the, the future city, and I just don't want anybody up here to ever lose track of what we're trying to accomplish. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hayden, you, you and I may be having our first fight. First of all, I just wanted to say, I appreciate what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying. And I guess for me, you know, I find it a bit offensive that you would insinuate that some of us up here are pushing for the rollback rate to get votes. I know that those of us that are class of 2017, which I think, Mayor, you and I may be the only two still alive from that class that was elected up here, if you look at our millage rate history, I think our council historically, and those of us that were elected and those of us that sat at that time, Councilmember Cosden as well, did a really good job of either keeping the millage rate the same or going back. And I know that in the history that I've been up here, we've never gone to the rollback rate. I, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Hayden, about, you know, or Councilmember Welsh, about when Councilmember Tate was up here during our last recession, that was very devastating, and having to almost double the millage rate during a time when, you know, our residents were, were not having the housing values that we have. I understand that would be an incredibly difficult decision to do, and that's what I want to prevent. I don't ever want to be in a situation up here where we have to tax our residents a higher millage rate to be able to cover deficits within our city. And I think we've done a great job the last few years, making sure that we have reserves. You know, the mayor just mentioned the overflow we've had in our budget the last few years. So I think if any year that we want to look and, and consider the, the rollback rate, this would be the year. Mr. City Manager made a great point. From June 1st to July 1st, when we got our final numbers from the property appraisers, we had an additional $500 million to our, to our values. I mean, that's incredible. And I just feel like, again, you know, I would rather reward our residents now, and then maybe next year, the year after, if I'm still up here, we consider, you know, keeping the rate the same, so we can continue to build those reserves. But I'm still going to say that I'm in favor of the rollback rate, because I remember with our previous city manager and being on this committee right here, and you might remember this, Mr. Starner, but remember, we would always talk about those positions, God rest Joe's soul, those positions that weren't filled. And year to year to year, we would see that list of staff positions that were continually open. And I know that we challenged our former city manager a few years back with, instead of trying to go to 100% capacity with open positions, what if we looked at 98%? And Mayor, you remember, may remember this number better than me, but I want to say that year, we found like $3.6 million. So I think we definitely have room. And if we're going to do the rollback rate, I think now is the time, while everything is strong, especially if we're potentially facing a recession, because the last thing I want to do is give residents a higher tax rate when we're in a recession. So I feel like if we have an opportunity to support our residents and reward them for this strong housing values, then I'd like to take the opportunity to do it. And Councilmember Hayden, I was just kidding about being in our first fight. We're not in a fight. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to go with the rate that cuts the, I'd like to cut the tax rate, and I want to do what's best for the residents as far as amenities, infrastructure, things that they ask for, because when I go out into the community, the thing I get asked the most, besides current issues, is when is there going to be a park in my neighborhood? Why is it flooding in my neighborhood? These things that the city is supposed to provide. So obviously, where I'm getting is I want to go to the preliminary rate. I think the rollback would be a mistake. The rollback doesn't account for outside additional costs like inflation and construction costs and things like that, and I, I think it would be a move backwards if we went to the rollback rate. But I do have a question, a logistical question. The mayor brought up taking what's left over from fiscal year '22 and using it to spend on our parking lot items. Is that what you were saying, Mayor? Okay.
I think we take a look at that in December to see exactly what our financial position is.
Is that something that's feasible? Is there, I just want to know more about that from staff.
I believe it's feasible. When do, when are we, do we complete the, the audit?
We don't complete the audit until usually in March. So, you know, the, you'd be looking at a preliminary number, we may not have made all the general entries by then. I mean, we can give you a preliminary number, but it's not a real number. Let's put it that way.
Okay, so it wouldn't be on the schedule that we, that we were looking at. I just wanted to see if that was a possibility. That would be something interesting to do, but it doesn't affect what we're doing today.
Alls you're doing is really just moving things up by nine months. I mean, right now, we're, we're taking whatever the resources were and we're applying in the next fiscal year. Alls you'd be doing is just moving up by nine months, whatever the difference is. And so you'd be looking at those parking lot items a little earlier in the fiscal year, when we're still working on the parking lot items from the previous year. And so, you know, whether, and that's, that's essentially what would, would be happening.
We would be deferring everything almost a year, right? Nine months, March.
Right now, it's, you know, we, we finalize out the numbers, we know basically what we're looking at going forward, but, you know, much depends on what we set as a millage rate and how much we're going to use, and whether, you know, there's just a lot of factors that go into the development of the budget. But, yeah, but it gives us an idea of what we can utilize some of these temporary, non-recurring revenue sources for in the future.
Okay, so I just want to point out that for all of us up here, as far as I know, we would all get money back on our taxes if we go to the preliminary rate, even considering the assessments and fees that we pay. So I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to, I'm comfortable with the preliminary rate for that reason. I think it's a responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, before I get back to you, because of Robert's rules, I'll give everyone first opportunity to speak, and then I'll circle back to you. So the two item, or the two individuals that haven't spoke, Councilmember Tate and Councilmember Shepherd, whoever wants to go first.
I would just like to say that I would have, you know, when I looked at this package on Monday, I would have loved the opportunity to, to hold on to it for the couple of days. It's a lot of information to digest and to make the right decision. It's not about what I want or anybody else wants, it's about looking out for all the citizens of Cape Coral that, that all have different advantages and disadvantages. With a recession coming, I feel that we need to help the citizens as much as we can. At the same time, I don't want to hold the city back either. But like I said, this, there's a lot of information to digest. I, I think what could have happened is the, the little changes that might have occurred this morning, we could have just got a page with the, with the changes. At least I would have been able to digest all this information. I'm not one to make decisions quickly. I like to, to really weigh out my decision-making and weigh out all the variables, and I'm kind of uncomfortable with trying to make a rapid decision. We have a lot of citizens and even city employees that are having a rough time right now, even when it comes to the fuel cost, putting food on the table. You know, at the same time, we all, we all want better parks, we all want sidewalks, we all want to buy the new pool for our house, we all want a new car, or some of us even just want to be able to afford maintenance on their house. And so we have to look at all that. So this is a tough one. I'm going to be honest, I haven't made my final decision yet. I'm still going back and forth in my mind with the, the different numbers I see, possibilities. So that's all I have to say at this moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. Well, at first, when I saw this yesterday, I wondered why we did five budgets and why we spent so much time doing that. But as I look at it today, it gives me a real perspective on each budget, each millage rate and how we do it. And as everyone knows, I've been here a long time, this is probably one of the easiest budget cycles I've been through. And the information that we got, maybe we didn't get it yesterday, but to be perfectly honest, if you had given this to me yesterday, I wouldn't have looked at it last night. So I'm just being totally honest. It didn't matter to me when I got it, it's how it was explained to me yesterday, which made me prepared for today, and that's why I appreciated all the different rollback number, all the different millage rates, because now I really see in these little boxes exactly what we do. I agree with Councilmember Hayden, there's no reason to do a strategic plan and a ULI if we're not going to move forward. And Jessica, when she said she's in the community, that's what you hear all the time. I read the paper every day, and I see Punta Gorda doing all these amazing things, Charlotte County has the Aquatic Center. These are all things that we want, but we're not willing to do it. And I know there are tough times, believe me, I hear it and see it every day, just in my own family. So between the rollback rate and the preliminary rate, it's really less money than my electric bill, that's for sure. And yes, in, in the grand scheme of things, every little penny counts, but I can't, at this point, and I know a couple of months ago, or when we were at Palmetto Pines, I supported the rollback rate, but in my heart, I really wasn't there because I want to see Cape Coral be better than Charlotte County, than Punta Gorda, than Port St. Lucie that we hear about all the time. I want to make those headlines for being the best city, and I don't think we can do it on the rollback rate. And I think that's the reason people move here, is they're expecting this quality of life. We're making all these top 10 lists and top 20 lists, but if we don't give the citizens what they came here for, besides canals, then I don't think we're accomplishing it. So unfortunately, and I don't think today, Mr. City Manager, that we're going to give you clear direction from what I hear. On the budget stabilization, I believe everybody's on the same page. Water and sewer rates, I guess, no matter how much I say no, you're going to convince me that that is something that we do need to do. And I agree with Mr. Mason, when it comes to that, you take quicker showers and use less water. That's just the way it is with your air conditioning bill, too. So while I can agree that I would love to go to the rollback rate and give the citizens everything, I think the citizens deserve more. So at this stage, and like I said, I don't think I can commit today, I would be between the preliminary and the fallback. And I seriously think that our citizens deserve what they moved here for. We've had thousands of people come in here and complain, whether it's they want a pool, whether they want a community center, whether they want another senior center. I mean, these are all things that they move here for. And so I, I feel like this council needs to look forward and not, and not to today. I know today is looking a little grim, but I have to believe that tomorrow's going to be even better. And most of the homes that are under construction of the 700 permits, I would say none of them are, I would say at least 50% of them haven't even hit the tax rolls yet, because there's still new construction. And they won't go on until the following year or the year after that. So that is still money that will be coming in. So to wrap up my tribe here, I'm between the preliminary and the fallback, and unfortunately, I can't give you that today. I'm sorry if that's what you wanted, but I need a little time. But I do appreciate, this is the best chart. So Mark, thank you for this. And I've been through your budgets many, many years, and this is one of the best ones.
So you know, we use that from somewhere else.
That's all right. Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's really helpful, because, you know, numbers are numbers, and they, and they just kind of roll together. You can give us all these charts and everything, but this kind of tells you whether we're going to plan for the future, whether we're going to stay the way we are, or we're going to get worse. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh, we'll circle back to you.
Thank you. I wanted to make a comment on Councilmember Nelson's statement that, you know, if now's the time to give back, the difference that we're giving back between the, you know, we will take the 266, 194, the difference between the preliminary rate, which funds everything that we want and keeps us moving forward with the ULI, compared to the rollback, which doesn't do anything that the ULI wants, and doesn't necessarily put us towards a three-month reserve, without Mark's magical three-year formula, is $40. So that's not even a half a tank of gas these days, and I think it'd be, I personally think, sticking with what we wanted to in, in January, and sticking with what keeps the city moving forward at the preliminary rate is still my minimum. And I would even still fight for the 5.9, because it gives discounts to all residents, pretty much, on what they paid last year at 5.9. So I think the minimum we should be looking at is the preliminary rate now, not going to the fallback. Because if you look in, like I brought up again, in 2007, we were, we were okay, we were still above the rollback, but 2008, when that hit, we stayed below what the rollback rate was. And that's when the city had to freeze pay for 10 years, that's when the city had to play catch-up, and it took us 15 years to recover to get to this point. So to throw ourselves way down to a 5.3, and then try to crawl back up and keep the city funded for what they need, unless we're willing to, if something happens next year, raise everyone's taxes to, to the rollback rate. I don't think the rollback rate is what we should be shooting for. We should be shooting for what's best for the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mark, there's, there's a ton of numbers here, but could I ask you, before I start talking out of my tail here, what, a lot of the discussion here today has been centered around the, the available funds that we would have or won't have regarding the decision in the millage rate to do some of these projects that we've discussed or identified in the parking lot. What would be the difference of those actual funds that we could utilize towards those, based on the rollback and the preliminary? I think I know it, but I want you to make sure before I...
I think, I think it's probably best to go here.
Yep.
The things that are on the parking lot are primarily, right now, being funded with one-time revenues.
Correct.
Non-recurring revenues. So if we're going to flip over, we're going to talk about the millage rate, we'd be talking about, you know, funding recurring costs, and whether you want to use current revenues for some of these parking lot items in the future. That's really what we're talking about.
Right.
Okay? So, you know, it, you know, as an example, if we go to the rollback rate, we will have to decrease something. In this particular case, we're not suggesting to you that, you know, the reduction to the fleet are things that didn't need to be done. All of those fleet vehicles still need to be replaced. Alls we're doing is deferring the cost to some future year. They still need to be replaced. And so, you know...
Sure, I'm, I'm asking how we quantify the value attributed towards these projects that everyone is saying that we're cutting by going to the rollback versus the preliminary?
In the, in, in this particular circumstance, at the, I think, we're not, we're not cutting any projects. What you're doing is, in, by going to the rollback rate, is that we have deficits we're going to have to evaluate and deal with in the future, and we're going to need to cut something to be able to fund the additions to the budget. At the rollback rate, when you're looking at these deficits, if you're looking at adding more police officers next year, if you don't have another 20% increase, you're not going to be doing it.
I get, I get...
Because we're at a deficit, is what we're talking about. You know, when you're talking about the rollback rate. And so, you know, if, if you're going to the rollback rate, you're kind of hoping that you're going to have a big increase again next year. We might not have that. I don't know what the answer is, but at this point...
That's, that's what I'm getting at, is we're almost having two different discussions here, because we're...
I, I realize...
When we're having these impassioned speeches about...
I'm not cutting any projects.
Moving forward as a city...
Right.
They're not talking about being able to budget X amount of firefighters, they're talking about some of the parking lot items. And it's hard to quantify that in a figure based on the two millage rates, and I understand...
So let's go to the parking lot items. So when, when we, we developed the parking lot for you, or we developed all of these items on here, you know, the, many of the items that were in the parking lot, we added in... were in the parking lot, we added in. But in order to add some of these items in, we had to move some of these items out. The items that were removed are not necessarily, are not going to be funded with the millage rate.
Right.
At the, at our preliminary rate. If you go to a higher rate, you could fund some of these things with that cash.
Correct. So what's that cash?
Is really what you're saying.
Correct. What's that cash? What was the amount?
Oh, in this particular case, if I'm going to 5.9 mils, that would be an additional, I think, $8 million, yeah, $7 million.
I got four.
If it was at 6.25, it'd be, you'd be going from 11, I think it's an additional 15 million.
Right, but we're not talking about 6.25. So let's just hold to that 5.5.
5.5, we're not funding any of these items that are on your parking lot. We're funding the proposed budget that we presented to you, the preliminary budget that we presented to you. That's what the 5.5568 funds. It doesn't fund any of these parking lot items. These parking lot, well, actually, I should say that you did add a few items that were into the budget that were, I think we're funding some additional money for the, these buildings up here at Lake, just up the road. I think we're also funding a couple of these boat ramps that were included, that are actually in current revenues, not, not...
But you're saying we could draw cash from that if we had the additional, based on increasing the, or not increasing, but going to the 5.5? We could pull funds from that, those figures, to service some of the parking lot items?
No.
So what are we talking about here, then?
I'm not.
That's what I'm confused about. I'm clearly missing something.
Let me take a shot at that. Mr. Mason, if you go back to slide number 19, you show the millage rate options from 5.3 through 5.5, at the various reserve amounts. And if we went with two and a half months reserves, under the 5.46 or the 5.3 millage scenario, does this chart indicate there's one point, if I look at the 5.3, at two and a half months, does this chart show that there's $1.2 million left over, once the budget stabilization reserve fund requirements are met, the two and a half months, that can be allocated to parking lot items?
Correct. Yes. And if you go to the 5.4631, you'd be at about 1.7. At 5.5568, it's an additional $3.9 million that you could identify to go towards the parking lot items.
The $4 million is the number that I'm theoretically looking for, although the discussion with the millage is separate, but...
Correct.
$4 million we're talking about here. So everyone is talking about changing the world with $4 million based on these two millage rates, is what I'm, is the point I'm getting at. Meanwhile, one single project, the police station, is what, $8 million over budget? So somehow, in the presentation that we're given, we're told that the preliminary will give us, the ULI recommendations will not be funded. We go to 5.9, let's just say it's a few more million dollars. And now all of a sudden, the ULI, the basic ULI recommendations are funded. And then we go to the 6.2, and then the ULI recommendations are moderately funded. Okay?
Correct.
Couple million dollars difference. How's that possible? When I just said one project is several million dollars over budget, and that eats up the whole difference in the allocated funding that we have available.
I think you're mixing apples and oranges here.
I might be.
All right. So like, for example, you mentioned the police training center. Well, that funding is...
I know it's separate. I'm just doing it in the scope of, if we're doing projects, each project is severely over budget. So how are we, we're talking about, he just said $4 million difference between the 5.5 and the 5.3, theoretically, to address towards these parking lot items. We all agree on that. We've got to that point. $4 million in differences.
Yeah, you lost me.
Okay.
So the one-time expenditures are above budget, what we're under budget, then we can use that the next year for...
The 16.9 that Mr. Mason has identified, those are leftover monies from FY21 that you can spend, okay? Once you spend it, it's done, and so forth.
Right.
But depending on the millage rate scenarios, the various ones, he's estimating that you may still have money left over. So what didn't get funded in the 16.9, from that one-time expenditure slash parking lot?
Right.
You might be able to fund some of those items, using whatever money is available, based on the millage rate scenario and the budget stabiliz, budget stabiliz, budget stabilization reserve target that you select.
Which we equated with roughly $4 million.
If it's the two and a half...
Correct. If you leave it at 5.5568, correct.
Yeah. So $4 million between the two.
If you don't, you go to the rollback rate, it's 1.2 million.
Do all these things.
Yes, you can use the 1.2 million dollars towards, you know, some of these parking lot items, whichever ones you choose. But it, again, I realize that there's been a lot of discussion about the millage rate and about the parking lot items, to be able to get to some of the parking lot items. Okay. Now, I don't know what happened. Oops, sorry. And the issue for us isn't the parking lot items.
I know, but that's the discussion that's being had up here.
It's not being able to do some of those things. It's really dealing with the potential deficits that we may receive in the future. If the mayor is absolutely correct, and we see a 10% increase in property tax revenue, God bless us. I hope that happens. You know, we'll be able to do something with that, there's no doubt about it. But at this point in time, you know, I need to be on a conservative basis, and I need to be able to show a conservative approach. But even a 10% increase in property tax values won't get rid of that particular deficit right there on, at the rollback rate. So, I mean, we can go back, we can identify what that is, we can bring in, we can, you know, if you want, we can bring STANTEC in here for our budget workshop, we can go through scenario after scenario, figure out what it is that we need to do, what we want to fund with debt, not fund with debt. We can do a lot of things. But, you know, for me, right now, it's what we're dealing with, not next year in 2023, it's what we deal with in future years after that. Because we do look to provide you a three-year budget. And when we go in there and we forecast, if the city council elects to sit there and sit on the rollback rate, we will do what we need to do to go back and turn those red numbers to green. And we'll come back and tell you what we needed to do to turn the red numbers to green. And in the most part, you know, to turn the red to green, we need to cut something. Something needs to go away in order to make it green. Because growth will drive the need for something in the future. But at the same time, if we're not able to fund that growth in the future, I mean, I can go back to the millage rate scenarios that you all looked at, and what you adopted, and what the city adopted in those early years. During those early years, when we were at the lowest ebb of the recession, you weren't able to fund your growth annually. You were able to keep your heads afloat annually, for the most part, but we weren't funding, you know, the growth annually. We just got the city, the police department to a positive personnel rate last year, or this year, in this particular current fiscal year, 11 years from the point that we ended up having to freeze positions. So it's not about the parking lot, and I appreciate the comments about the parking lot and the need to do a lot of different projects, and the need to achieve the ULI goals and our, and the dream of having the vision that the city has for itself. But in my case, it's really dealing with those next four years and what those deficits mean.
Right. My point was trying to bring to light the fact that those are two different discussions with the parking lot and the millage.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. Because we're up here mostly talking about the parking lot, and it has nothing to do with the forecasted deficits here, with the operating budget. Now, one last question, the operating budget, the forecasted deficit for next year, would, I can't find the figure here, but would that include the $15 million that we kicked to the next budget for the golf course?
Doesn't include the $15 million. It includes the potential design cost of $1 million that you may end up still utilizing one-time revenues for next year. But at this point in time, I don't know that you have one-time revenues available for that, so I'm identifying it as current revenues.
Okay. So where did the $15 million end up?
The $15 million is in the CIP for when we have the availability to actually do the project.
But that's not including any of these deficits?
It's not including any of this.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Councilmember Tate.
The mayor brought up the leftover funds from 1920 and 21. Can you explain that, and where are those funds accumulated?
Correct. So...
I mean, he was talking about $4.7 million, so...
No, I appreciate that. And I wish I had brought the last year's presentation on all of that. But, so in, following fiscal year 2018, after you had drawn down much of the reserves in order to recover from Irma, you were sitting at about $30 million, thereabouts, in the general fund reserves. And so decisions were made by the city council to set aside certain revenues that came in, apply those, you know, for, you know, potentially for the overruns, or the excess costs associated with doing the parks bonds. At the same time, COVID hit, so we decided to use those funds. So much of these funds have gone in and actually to fund your reserves, back to the levels that you expected them to be at, whether at two times or 2.5 times. Over the course of those last couple of years, some of those resources went back in to fund that reserve level. That's one of the reasons why today you're at, right around $40 million at the 2.5 times expenditures. But at the same time, excuse me, the, you know, some of the excess went into that. And then we used, this past year, $18.7 million towards doing one-time improvements this year. I mean, you know, the comment about, you know, I mean, I think it should be understood, any of these one-time improvements we're doing, if there's an expectation they're going to be done in one year, capital projects don't work that way. And I would hope that everybody recognized that, that it doesn't, that it doesn't work that way. You know, if we had the designs, we had all the approvals, everything in place, and we came back and said, okay, now we need the money, you know, that means we went and spent something else, and then we're going to come back and we're ready to go do it. But, you know, we'll probably have something on the street the next day. But, you know, it takes time to do the design, it takes time to get things done. But be that as it may, the point with this is, is that, yes, we spent $18.6 million, $18.7 million in the current year to fund certain things. And in this particular year, we're using an additional $16.9 million. And based upon my calculations, depending on what millage rate we settle on, you will have some additional resources that's available, that you can utilize towards the parking lot items that are considered to be one-time funding sourced projects.
One other thing is, let me see if I can get this right.
If you choose to do so.
You just said, if we went to the rollback rate, that you would bring us a budget that takes out the red and makes it green, which means that there would, isn't that what you just said?
I did.
Okay. So in that scenario, and I think for me, it's really important, what do we lose in that scenario? Forget the parking lot items, ULI, and all that other stuff. Where do you find the projects, or the people, or the staff, or the services, that you exit out in order to get to it green? And then, I mean, for me, that would be really important information. Who loses their job? Who keeps their job? Who gets carpet? Who doesn't get carpet? I mean, that's the way you're going to balance it, right?
Correct.
Talking about the rollback scenario that we have here before.
Yeah, the rollback scenario.
Well, I'm talking about what he just said. He said, if you give, yeah.
Yeah, the rollback scenario, yeah.
If I give you clear direction of eight people to go to the rollback rate, you're going to come back with a budget that's balanced with the rollback rate, and it won't be red.
That's correct.
It'll be green. I want to know what's eliminated out of that.
And what we have, in order to balance the budget for next year, at the rollback rate, we will simply defer or eliminate the replacement of vehicles that are scheduled up for replacement, either year, mileage, condition, or what have you.
Is that it?
Well, no, no, that's for fiscal year 2023. For fiscal year '24, '25, '26, and '27, we're going to have to go back, and we're going to have to evaluate what that means. Do we, again, defer vehicle replacements? Yeah, I mean, that makes up a good chunk of this money, but yes, we would defer vehicle replacements.
Right.
We would end up deferring other things. But with these deferrals, continued deferrals.
And that's my point, is it would be, for me, it would be helpful to see what all are we deferring? And, because sometimes when you defer, it costs more in the long run.
Yes. Essentially, you know, another way to look at a rollback rate is a reset rate. You know, you're basically resetting everything. You know, you're starting out afresh, you're saying, okay, we've reset, we're ready to go with something different. You know, and, but, I mean, that's essentially what it is. But in order to get to that reset, and look at future years, you have to look at what the impact of the future years will be, based upon that, that particular millage rate. Because, again, next year, I mean, we're still going to be, you know, this is the largest portion of your general fund, makes up 50% of your overall budget. It has the biggest impact when it comes to making changes to it. So whatever change happens, oh yeah, we're going to, we'll still receive, you know, probably some level of increase in, you know, in the state shared revenues. We'll likely see some level of increase because of usage, new properties coming online with regard to, you know, the public service tax, as well as the franchise fee. We're likely to see all of those things. But those just keep you balanced. Those pay for the, you know, what's happening. It's not necessarily going to help you pay for the things that we've promised to have, to keep in place for future years.
So to Councilmember Long's point, just so you know, Councilmember Long and other councilmembers, I am not looking at ULI and the parking lot items when I look at the stability millage rate. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think for me, when you take a look at the rollback rate here on this slide that's actually being presented, you know, the rollback rate or avalanche tax is just one aspect of our revenue that we have in our city. The difference between the rollback rate, because the millage rate is for the general fund, is $117, $117 million. The 5.5 that some of you had mentioned is $121 million in revenue. The difference is $4 million. I don't care how you cut it.
Right, that's what we're still looking at.
$4 million bucks, that's the difference. That's what's on the table for me, when I'm looking at this.
Right.
Now, the $4 million, you know, if you look, the last three years, the monies left over at the end of the budget, you talked about Irma, and some of the monies that were utilized, I think we spent about $17.5 million for Irma. And I think we've gotten all that money back, but two or 2.5.
Yeah, about 2.5 million.
Right. And, and what we've done is, we've parked that money, it's parked over here. The monies that we've received, or at least we have a percentage of it, $10, $11 million, I think.
A percentage of it that was general fund related, yes.
That's sitting over there right now. I know we've sold some property over the last three years. That money's sitting there. You know, so when you look at your checkbook, and your checkbook is zero, and everybody wants to scream, "The checkbook's zero," why don't we take a look at it in our savings account? Because there's money there. We know there's going to be money coming at the end of the year. We budget it 96%. You know there's going to be some dollars there. We're talking about $4 million. Add a $960 million, or whatever it was, I forgot what the exact number was. Whatever that budget number is total, you don't think you could come up with that small percentage of dollars and figure out where you can save it? I know I could do that in my checkbook. If I had to take whatever that percentage is and look in my checkbook, and say, okay, maybe I can't get that car washed every week. Maybe I got to turn that air conditioner up to 80 or 78. The money's there. We're only talking $4 million. Now, I understand that there's going to be a ripple effect. I'm not that naive. There's going to be a ripple effect for the next couple of years that we got to look at as well. The difference is $4 million. There's, I could almost find out with my eyes shut. That's what I'm saying. So that's my position. Councilmember Welsh.
Do we want to poll the Budget Review Committee on what they feel, and then get a final poll from all of us, so that we can move on to the one-time expenditures? Because I have some stuff I'd like to talk about there. So I don't want to leave City Manager without direction, since everyone's had a chance to talk to him.
I think the one-time expenditures is a...
It's a separate discussion, that's what I'm saying. So do we want to, do we want to ask the Budget Review Commission what they feel on their thoughts are on the rollback, on the rollback rate or the tax rates? And then maybe Dan will have his decision, or Gloria might...
Yeah, I think what we need to do today is get the answer to City Managers looking forward, try to, anyway.
Yeah.
The four items.
Yeah. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to close off item one by maybe letting them give their suggestions, and then ask the two that were kind of wavering.
That's fine, but as far as the parking lot items, I think that's a discussion for a different day, for me. I don't know about you guys.
Well, he asked for all four of these today.
I didn't see parking lot items listed on the...
Agree on one-time expenditures, is number three.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, that's what this says, that's what this sheet is. And they've reduced some and removed some. So I feel like we could have a conversation on that today, so that when he comes back with the final budget, it's all there.
Right. For me, I would have to see the overall budget wherever we end up, before I could even have that discussion.
Yeah, but this, as Mark said, this 16.9 is where it is. That, we don't have any other choices of that, am I correct? This is what we have to spend on one-time expenditures, that's not going to change?
I do, but I don't have to think of the front. I want to be able to put it up on the screen.
I guess they've confused me now.
As we discussed, if we went to the, if we go back to this particular page and looked at this, we'll just deal with these particular three millage rates, because we're not really interested in the other two. So if you were to say right now that, okay, the consensus is we go to the rollback rate, I would tell you that, okay, based upon my preliminary numbers... I would tell you that, okay, based upon my preliminary numbers that we have here and what we've calculated about what you would have left over, if you went to the rollback rate, you've got one point two million dollars to go back and identify against the, the one-time, the, the, basically, what we call the one-time expenditure list. So with that list, and/or if you were to decide that, you know, the, you're at five point five, five, six, eight, then you've got three point nine million dollars.
I'm saying though, this, this sixteen point nine is already there, correct?
Sixteen point nine, eight, eight is already there.
Yeah, and since our last discussion, we've removed some things and reduced some things, and I want to have that conversation today, because you mentioned that there might be a possibility we could split the PD and E into two years. So that would allow us to discuss some of these that we've removed...
Correct.
...to be brought back into this year. That's what I want to do after we figure out the mileage rate.
I, I may not have been as clear as possible when we, when we started talking about this, but I appreciate all the discussion that's come around this. So, you know, depending, again, it depends on what mileage rate you end up with, depends on how much you can do here. If we elect that we want to split the PD and E cost, and we want to do one, half of it this year, half of it next year in twenty twenty-four, then you have that, you know, capacity to be able to do that. That would mean that these items that are removed, or even the ones that you move to future year, you would then take a look at those and say, okay, well, what do we want to do? And do we want to put any of this back over into the included column? You know, so the sixteen point nine, eight, eight might actually increase.
Yeah. Well, that's why I want to at least get the mileage rate done, so we can move on to the other items.
And I recognize you're probably not prepared to make those decisions today. You know, if you come back and we do it at a, at a workshop, I recognize that, you know, we'll have that, because you have it here. So we'll have that, you'll have more of a discussion item that you can discuss with, with regard to this, when you get to that point. But it all depends, again, on where you stand on the mileage rate, which would depend on what you have the capacity to do with removed. Or if you decide you want to dip into that fifteen million dollars that we have set aside for future park improvements, or the land sales, or whatever, you can do even more stuff. You know, that's up to you. I just, I give that to you because it's there.
So what I was asking for is to poll the Budget Review Committee and hope that Councilmember Shepherd and Tate could decide, and we could run a poll here again. So if that could happen, I would appreciate it.
Okay, what we'll do is we get a couple more people with their lights on first. We'll, we'll go through that first. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you. I have a question, Mark, don't sit down, because you just said something.
Just when I was going to rest my back, thank you.
Did I hear you say, when we're talking about this one-time expenditures, it depends on the mileage rate? Because I thought we just agreed that the mileage rate has nothing to do with this. And I thought it did have something to do with it, and now I'm confused.
I, I'm sorry. I think what I was, what I was suggesting to you is how much additional resources you would have to apply, depending on the mileage rate.
Over the sixteen million?
These one-time expenditures here don't depend on the mileage rate. Depends on how much you fund would depend on the mileage rate. So as an example, because, you know, if we went to the five point five, five, six, eight, you know, you would have additional resources up to three point nine million dollars because of that.
Additional over...
Yes, additional that you can apply towards this, if you chose to.
Over the sixteen million, right? The sixteen million is covered, correct?
Sixteen point nine, eight, eight million dollars is covered.
Thank you for clarifying.
I'm sorry.
That's it. And I just want to say, that four million dollars that we're talking about for this year is not just this year, it's every year. Next year it could be five million, the year after that it'll be six million. It's going to keep growing. We're deferring costs this year, regular costs. We're not saving anything, we're just deferring, and we're going to have to spend it next year. I don't think that's a financially wise move, and we're setting ourselves up for an inevitable future tax increase. It's going to happen no matter what, it's going to be higher now. Okay, I'm not going to go into the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Like I said, this, this decision is a tough one. I, you know, my decision, I want to protect and do what I can to help the citizens of Cape Coral, but the other part of the decision is the quality of life. I don't just want to save our citizens' money, I want to make sure that we can still protect them properly, keep the value of our city. We are known to be one of the safest cities, and I don't want to lose that, that title. That's part of our value, that's part of our brand, and I want to make sure we protect our brand. By going back to the rollback with the increase in citizens and growing, are we going to continue to be able to add to our police force? That's very important to me. What I don't want to do is, is make a decision that impacts our value. I want to at least sustain the value that we have now. So if I hear that we can't sustain our value in protecting our citizens and keeping our quality of life, that, that's really where I'm at right now. Thank you.
I think we have a, Mr. City Manager, don't we have a plan in place for the next three years and our rolling budget as far as increase for public safety? Isn't that already built into our budget?
Well, what's built into the budget this year, and will be built into future budgets, are only the, the enhancements that we are approving in this year's budget. Next year, when we're at this exact same phase, hopefully earlier, the chief, the police chief will be coming to us with another request for additional staffing. So yes, he does have a multi-year plan to continue to add staffing to the police department, as does the fire department.
And I believe we're going to need to add more.
Okay, all right, I don't see any other lights on, so I guess we'll go ahead. We'll poll the Budget Committee, or at least give you a, a second opportunity to make comments, whatever they may be.
No, it's going on. I'm, I'm a little unclear about the utility rate, what it is versus what it's going to, and I don't feel a need to get additional clarity today, okay? But because my understanding is between the waste and the stormwater, it's a forty-dollar, forty-five dollar difference annually to each family. Am I right in...
Between the solid waste assessment and the stormwater assessment, yes.
Right, so I don't, I don't really know what the rates are now, or what we're voting on, but that's okay. I don't, I don't, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the forty dollars well enough.
And let me just say this, the forty dollar rate adjustment for solid waste assumes that the City Council will approve a contract adjustment to Waste Pro that is based on, basically, an inflationary formula. The Council has not made that decision yet. In fact, I think it comes up before Council on the twenty-seventh. But we just assumed that they have the ability in their contract, should Council approve it, to go to that level. So we built that in, okay? But if Council decides to not approve that inflationary increase, then that will affect the ultimate rate.
Thank you.
I will start with saying that I would, if I were sitting up there, I would vote to approve the budget as submitted at the five point five, six, eight, nine, whatever the, and I would vote on that because I'm, because of the growth prospects of the city, but I also want to be conservative, and it is in my nature to be so. I listened to what Mr. Mason said with respect to the Florida, the FSU economist, and that concerns me a great deal. And when I look at my favorite chart on page thirteen, I see, and I, Mrs. Tate, I'd really be interested in understanding a little bit about the impact when, when the rate went from four point seven six to seven point nine seven, how it felt sitting there, but not, not for today. I think that if we are, in fact, looking at a recession, next year's going to be worse, right? Property values aren't going to go up by ten percent, and everybody's pocket is not going to miraculously get better come January of next year, even if we don't go into a recession. I just don't have any belief, and I don't think any economists are looking at this year improving. So I think if we want to do something positive, and we're already doing something positive, right? My tax bill, if I'm the average taxpayer, at the preliminary budget rate is still going down by just my add valorem, a hundred dollars. Next year is when I'm going to want the relief, because next year's going to be worse than this year, and my hands are going to be more tied if, if, in fact, I can't move, I can't, I can no longer afford my gas, and I have to turn my thermostat up even higher. So I'm trying to understand that the hundred dollars is a savings now, and next year, maybe we're, we're going to need to give two hundred dollars, I don't know. So that, I would support the preliminary budget rate.
One thing I just wanted to clarify you made in your statement, the ten percent was what we had budgeted, staff had budgeted in the growth for our city for this year. It's actually at twenty-three percent.
It's actually a...
Twenty-three percent. I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's important. But me as the homeowner, I'm, you know, the fact that George's house went up by twenty-four percent, if I'm renting my house and trying to put more gas in my car, you know, it isn't really going to help me. But thank you.
I wanted to tie together a couple of comments that I heard from you folks, starting with the, Mr. Mayor, you said at the beginning of the meeting that if we make a suggestion or a recommendation, you also wanted to know why we made that recommendation. Mr. Hayden suggested he's looking towards the future of the city and wants that to be bright, I think. I think it was Councilmember Nelson who talked about the headlines that some of these other cities are getting in favorable press, and I think, wasn't that you? That wasn't you? That was you, sorry. Anyway, I heard it one way or the other. So my recommendation would be that we go to the halfback rate of five point nine, oh three, four. My reasons for that is, based on the chart on page fourteen, everybody still gets a tax cut, although it's minimal, but we can, we can look the citizens in the eye and say, we didn't raise your rates. No, they didn't go down much, but we didn't raise your rates. Everybody gets a cut. Based on the information on page, the second, on chart number nineteen, page two of chart nineteen, with that, with that mileage rate of five point nine, oh three, four, and two and a half months reserves, you've got eleven point three million dollars to stick in the parking lot stuff, the, the needs that are in the parking lot. I think that's where the favorable headlines come in, is that the city has built X, Y, Z, and it makes us look favorable compared to the county above us and the county below us, the cities around us, and all that kind of thing. We want to look at the future, we want to look at the quality of life, we want to, we want to have positive headlines, and we, people are talking about a recession. Recall that, that the last recession, the Great Recession, property values went down, which means tax revenues go down. So we're not going to be able to have this discussion a couple of years down the road if, in fact, that happens. We're going to be trying to scratch and get back to even as opposed to having surpluses. So I think while we've got it, we need to take advantage of it, and let's do the right thing for the citizens by giving them a little bit of a tax cut, but also spend some of that money on things that the citizens want. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As Mrs. Average Cape Coral, living in a working-class neighborhood, my utility bill, with my thermostat set at seventy-seven, went up one hundred dollars this month. That's a lot of money. Some tiny portion of that was increased use, increased usage, because it was hotter, but that's going to be a hundred dollars almost every month all year. So the hundred dollars I'm going to get back in my taxes one time, and the hundred dollars I'm going to pay every month, and I think there's a lot of folks like me, and I think we have to go to the rollback, because we've got all these citizens. I can imagine that some of them aren't going to have the hundred dollars to pay. I vote for rollbacks, that's me. Thank you.
I completely agree. Saying something like, it's only an additional forty dollars when insurance is up, gas is up, every single thing is up, I think is just extremely inappropriate. There's a lot of people say that to a teacher, a first responder, a paramedic, somebody on disability. That's just not the right attitude to have, especially when you're elected by the very people who are suffering. I fully support the rollback rate, that was actually my entire intention of getting on this committee. Thank you so much for trusting me with the responsibility of participating, I, I do appreciate it. You know, I feel like, I love this city, I've been here my whole life, but I feel like we may have bitten off more than we can actually chew in a year. You know, I remember the slogan was twenty-one and twenty-one, we were supposed to have twenty-one parks in twenty-one, and I remember thinking, how are we even going to do that? I'm not even sure if any of them are finished yet. When Mark called this the reset rate, I love that term, and I think that's a great idea. Maybe right now is a great time to reset, finish the projects that are in front of us, really balance the budget, get the money into savings that we can. It's one year, the city's not going to fall apart in a year. We can look at this again next year and say, all right, everybody's back on their feet, at least we gave a little bit of relief to the people, let's see what we can add on to the budget and comfortably do in, in the next year. I support the rollback rate, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I got a couple of comments, just to go back to chart thirteen on Mr. Mason, just, okay, you know, this mileage rate history has been talked to, you know, and I have this debate with Mr. Mason all the time about apples-to-apples comparisons, and you really got, to look at apples-to-apples here, you got to look at what happened in two thousand thirteen and fourteen, when this Council added two more tax rates. The PST, you added eight million dollars in electric tax, that came, basically saved you money in the mileage rate, and then the next year, you moved the fire FSA rate to a unique bottom-line tax that created another windfall within the budget for mileage rate. So you really got like thirty-eight million dollars per year to an apples-to-apples comparison, because you created new tax over and above the mileage rate. So you can say it took us fifteen years to get back to a hundred million dollars, but no, we're, if you add the thirty-eight million dollars of the FSA and the PST, you're at a hundred and fifty million dollars this year, you know, because you created new taxes. And that would be an apples-to-apples comparison of all the data prior to two thousand thirteen, in my opinion. Now, just another thing to look at on this chart, and just look at twenty twenty for a comparison, that third to the last column where you got the round number of a hundred million. Using the rollback rate today, at twenty twenty-three, you have twenty-one more million dollars per year to spend than you have since twenty twenty. That's twenty-one million dollars, that's twenty-one percent increase in a four-year period of time that you get to spend every year, even if you use the rollback rate. Okay, that's, that's a yearly increase that you get to use every year. That's, so, a lot of money. Now, my question for Mr. Mason, your preliminary budget that we had at the workshop, that included a going from a two and a half month to three-month reserve, right?
I'm sorry, which one?
The preliminary budget we talked about just a month ago or so. It had ten million dollars in there for adding to the reserve.
It did.
So if you just take that out and go back to two and a half, you're below the rollback rate, because you're only looking for four million difference, right? If you take out all nine million of that, you're below the, the rollback rate. And I think, just me personally, I was happy at two point oh for the, for the reserve. And I know people talk about a disaster, we got to have more money, but as you just said, Mr. Mayor, you know, we got FEMA money back from Irma, that's almost covered our entire cost. You know, so the federal government came in and gave us a break, and we'd probably get that if there was a disaster. So I'm not sure we should panic too much and have that much reserve. And the second point of my statement of that is, we're so conservative in budgeting, there's always fifteen to twenty to thirty million left over every year. So either you have a reserve, or you have conservative budgeting, but you don't need both. So just thoughts about that, but to me, if you go back to the two and a half, you're easily at the rollback rate and still got money left over for parking lot. That's how I see it.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Just as a reminder, the last three years were COVID-related, that's the only reason why there was excess reserves that were available. If you go back prior to those years, they were not. If you go back prior to those years, they were not at those values. They were much thinner. You know, when you're talking about apples-to-apples on this particular millage rate history, I think the, when, when you, when the city council put in place the FSA as well as the 7% public service tax, you know, yes, you reduced the millage rate by .2 mils when you did that, but it was clearly recognized at the time because we had this same discussion in 2009 that the, if you kept on the same trajectory you were going in without having additional resources, you, it wasn't sustainable going forward. In other words, if you had to keep those, if those funds were not available to you, your millage rate would be closer to about eight or nine right now in order to fund those service levels that you're dealing with today. So that's the apples-to-apples comparison if we're going to talk about apples-to-apples. So the, you know, it's important to recognize, I, I wasn't here when Mr. Zerlai put the three-legged stool in, but I remember talking about something very similar in 2009 when we, when we originally broached that same subject. So, thank you.
Just one quick question, Mr. Mason. Since the one member of the Budget Review Committee picked the 5.4, the fallback rate, when I take a look at that, would it be a fair statement to say the biggest difference between the rollback and the fallback rate is 2.5 in reserves budgeted versus 3 in those two scenarios?
The, okay, the fallback rate, if I'm not mistaken, was the?
5.4631. Page before that.
Back, 5.4631?
Yes, sir. Now, there's only about a $500,000 difference down at the bottom, the 12 to 17.
Right, if you wanted to throw it towards.
But I would say the majority was probably because you'd forecasted a three-month reserve. And I would think that that would be probably more substantial than the two-and-a-half to three than just that $500,000.
In, in this circumstance, we're two-and-a-half, the 5.4631 doesn't fund the three, three times, so. But it, as I heard the discussion, I heard two different numbers, unfortunately, so. And I'm pretty sure that the, the member can correct me, but he actually said something about $11 million more available towards the one time, which would have been the 5.9 or what we call the halfback rate or something like that. So a lot of football references, unfortunately, but they all have back in them. And so going backwards, so it's, just saying. It's, so, I, he, he talked about $11 million versus the other number, so I'm not really sure.
Okay. Yeah, now, we'll go ahead and open the floor up. I guess we'll go ahead and poll and go down. I just wanted to say, you know, I probably, I know that I'm a very strong advocate for public safety in our city. If I thought at any time going to the rollback rate would compromise the public safety of our city, I would not recommend that. So I still feel that we can grow our police and fire departments where they not only keep up with the growth, but they also plan for the future growth. At any time, if I thought that wasn't the case, I would not recommend going to the rollback rate. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Councilmember Cosson, I think we started with Councilmember Long last time, is that correct? So why don't we start with you?
Preliminary?
Preliminary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same.
Rollback.
Preliminary.
Rollback.
Rollback.
Sounds like we're split four to four there, Mr. City Manager. Let's talk about, there's four items I think he was looking on. Why don't we just try to get down those pretty quick? Determine budget stabilization reserves as far as a level target. I think that is a two-part question. Where do we want to be today? And what is our ultimate goal going to be? We'll start with Councilmember Long. Page two.
Yep. Just going down the list here. Yeah, my goal again would be to maintain the current reserve level with a goal, I don't know how far out that would be with moving towards the three as financially practicable. But yeah, the, the current reserve level is more than sufficient in my mind for this particular budget. Thank you.
Current?
I'd like to be at 3%, but I'm willing to reach that target in three years if I have to.
Three months?
Three months.
Yeah, three months. So I'd be willing to see a three-year plan to get there, but I'd like to get there this year.
I'm at three.
Yeah, for me, two-and-a-half for this year. And for council, have future discussions, develop a timeline, a three-to-five-year plan, maybe to get to that three.
Two-and-a-half.
2.5 with a target of three in two to three years.
Three.
Okay, next item, one-time expenditures.
Wait a minute, so can we go back and just, what was the vote on that?
Mr. City Manager, what'd you come up with there? I saw you writing.
2.5?
So it looks like the majority of council prefer to be at 2.5. One, two, three. But then I have an equal amount that want 2.5 months, but with the goal of reaching three over a period.
I'm there. So I can change my three to 2.5 with that goal of getting there.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, that's okay, the next item, one-time expenditures. For me, it's a little premature at this time.
That's going to be a future discussion.
I think that, that's, that's a topic of a, for another discussion. Because once we decide what this overall budget's going to be, I think we'll have a better understanding of dollars that we have to work with. For me, I need that information first, so that's how I see that. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I was looking at finishing this today, but maybe we can at least decide one thing. What Mr. Mason said is that the state won't be looking for the 4.5 until fiscal year 2024. So it might be easier for them to develop a budget if we take half of that away now and allow them to use 2.25 of that to help some of these other parking lot items, and then they could bring that back as a discussion for us to choose.
Yeah, I mean, that's a priority for me, but I still think we have to have that discussion as a whole.
I'm not ready to go there.
So I'm not really ready to get into it yet.
Okay, so council's clear on that. So here's what we're going to do, Mr. Mayor. We'll just submit in the proposed budget, the list that Mr. Mason submitted here. Again, you're not voting on it yet. So I just need all of this input so I can give you back something. So I will give you back what Mr. Mason gave you today, understanding that you still have three budget workshops scheduled in August to have those conversations, and then you still have two public hearings in September. So you get multiple bites at, at the, at the apple once staff is in the position to give you the apple.
So are you just going to allocate a dollar amount and then?
Yeah, I'm going to give you the, the slide that's included, that shows, you know, what you added to get to the $16.9 million. What projects are there, what projects had to be taken out. We're just going to give this back to you in the proposed budget. And then you will still have the opportunity to make any adjustments you want along the way.
I did have one other question, if I can, since we're on the subject. The, the crime equipment, or crime center equipment and construction, is that what was in the state budget that got vetoed?
Yes.
And how many years have we been putting that in the budget and it's been taken out?
At least, chief, what, three, multiple years, every year I've been here, so.
At least three years.
Okay. So I see that we, we took that out as one of the items that was removed. And I know we're not discussing it now, but to me, that's one that's important because, you know, stuff that we kick down the can five years, all of a sudden, it's going to cost us a whole lot more when we look at these parking lot items. So that's why I was hoping to at least take half of the PDE out today. But if we're moving it to another discussion, I will save that conversation for later.
Okay, the last item on this list is water and sewer rate adjustments. Apparently, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, we've kind of put in place and forecasted for a 3% increase.
That is correct.
For our water and sewer rates. It sounds like in order for us to be able to achieve our 25-year utility expansion projects for, for water and sewer, we almost have to have that increase. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That is correct. That was based on the financial analysis that was presented, I believe, in February of this year when we brought before you the proposed UEP slash utilities master plan.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll start with Councilmember Cosson this time and, and we'll make a recommendation.
I don't think I can have an opinion on it because I think it's something we're going to have to do. So that's what I have to say? Yes?
Yeah, I'm good with the 3%.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice. And if we want to move forward with a 25-year master plan for utility expansion projects, we don't have a choice, so that's why I say yes.
I say yes, but Mark, when you did your presentation, you said 3% increase for the next 18 years. So I would hope that next year and the year after, that we would look at that and see if it does need to be increased every year based on growth and population, because I still go back to the idea, the more users, the less money. And I heard that for years and years. So I'm good with the 3%, but not really.
I'm kind of in the same boat, you know, I'm going to bite the bullet and say yes on the 3%, but I, I want to make sure that we do have that impact fee study budgeted this year. It's happening this year?
It's, it's currently in process.
Okay. And then once that happens, we'll adjust the, the capital fee maintenance and we'll adjust all the others so that in turn, we're not looking at more than three for the next 18 years.
Just, just as a reminder, you know, if you put it, if you put an impact fee, a new one in place, it really won't affect until UEP three. North three, sorry, north three.
It's still, it's still bringing what Laura and I both feel is that we've already paid our, our share and to pay into other people's share. I know it's not that, but we were told it's going to get cheaper as more, as more people come online and, and I know, and we've talked about it, so I'm okay with the three, but I'm just making sure that this study and putting it in is going to help us keep it at that.
Just as a reminder, you haven't increased the rates in, I think, seven years. And in 2004, as Councilmember Tate may or may not recall, when we brought that rate increase then, we hadn't increased the rates for eight years. And so it was a one-time hit at that time, which was fairly sizable. We're looking to actually smooth this out over a period of time.
I, I guess I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep it fair for everyone, so thank you.
We are. Thank you.
Three. We don't have a choice. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, it's been presented, we don't have a choice. But I just wanted to clarify something on my end is that it sounds like simultaneously we're, this was forecasted based on the current impact fees, but then we're also running a study that most likely is going to increase those fees. So I know you can't forecast that, but is that going to mean that we're going to have this additional funding after we, we increase those impact fees that would negate the need to rise to the 3% as we sit here today?
As, yes, as you recall, you know, when we discussed this, the answer is yes. Four or five years down the road, not immediately. We still have to do north two, and north two will be, will be under the current impact fee structure.
Understood. Thank you.
Or north one, sorry, north one. Get those two confused.
I think maybe a good approach with this too, because it have a lot of moving parts with this. And I think maybe this is something, Mr. City Manager, because, you know, this is something we're going to have to prove each, approve each and every year. So maybe, and that will maybe help some of us feel a little more comfortable because we're evaluating exactly where we are each year in this process moving forward. Maybe we can get a update on this particular topic right before budget season to kind of see where we're at, if there's any changes, might not be any changes. And I think that would maybe give us the information that would make us feel more at ease.
In general, we do a, we do a rate study every year. You know, the, we try to forecast out those things that are going to have to be replaced, lines replaced, we're going to have to, you know, we do a lot of R and R with regard to lift stations, et cetera. But, and those you try to forecast out over a 10-year period. But there are times when, as an example, we have the green area, the old green area, we have to go in there and replace all the water pipes. They break constantly. They're old, they were laid down on bare rock. When you have, when you have 70 pounds of pressure in the system, they bounce. And so, you know, they break. And so the, so we want to be able to, and those projects are now coming up and they need to be, they need to be taken care of. So we want to be, I don't want to give a false impression that, you know, the 3% is the be-all and end-all. That's, that's the minimum, okay? It, it's really just a matter of if we do, if, if the city council does increase the impact fees, yes, it will have some impact on the rates in the future. But if we don't, when we're forecasting these numbers out, we assume that nothing's changed. And this is our 10-year program, our 20-year program, and that's what we've developed this on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. So ahead of the four items that you've set your goals at today, Mr. City Manager, three of the four for sure, it sounds like you got clear direction. On the one topic, the millage rate, it looks like a majority of the Budget Review made a recommendation for the rollback rate, at least three of the five. And council, we're a four-to-four split. So that's where it appears that we're at.
So what I could do, Mr. Mayor, is the following. There's two approaches. The first one that I can do is I can submit a proposed budget that is based on the preliminary millage rate. And then in August, you can continue this conversation, okay? Because remember, you're not adopting the budget. But I need something so I can meet my statutory responsibility to you. I can do that, and you can have your discussion. Or I could submit a budget based on the rollback rate, and then you can have your conversation. And if you're not satisfied with the rollback rate, you can always adjust it upward. But I need to give you something. So I'm either going to give you a rollback budget or I'm going to give you a preliminary.
Well, I think some of the questions that some of us had today is, we wanted to see exactly what that looks like.
Right.
So I think I would prefer for myself, and I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, what I would like to see is that rollback rate budget. And then if we feel uncomfortable or we think that we need to change our opinion, at least we have the information right in front of us specifically that we can make that decision. So that's what my preference is. Councilmember Cosson.
I feel the opposite. I think we should give the preliminary budget because then we can, we can remove things. It's a lot easier to remove things from the budget than to add things, I imagine. I'm not in finance. Mark, did you want to? Okay. So I think that's the way that we should do it. And then we can get information from staff on what is different between the two budgets and make our decision there. That's what I think.
All right, so it sounds like we need to do another poll and go down the list. So you're thinking that you would like to have the preliminary budget and then go backwards. The only unfortunate thing for the ones that are supporting the rollback, we don't get to see exactly what that entails. So Councilmember Hayden, we'll go with you and just.
Yeah, I'm the same. You've got.
Yes, sir.
I think the city has provided to the industrial office a fast rate.
Well, we can, yeah, but we can do that.
That's a different time. That's setting the tentative millage rate, not, not the proposed budget. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hayden, back to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Councilmember Cosson. I'd like to see the preliminary budget. I think future discussions, as is, as what you're seeing on the screen today and what you have in front of you, gives you what would happen if we went to the rollback rate. So I think when you have continued discussions in your meetings with Mark or with, with Rob, you can have those discussions, but I'd rather have the preliminary budget like Councilmember said and, and then work down should we get to the point where it looks like the rollback rate might be adopted.
Excuse me a minute, Councilmember Shepherd. Madam City Clerk, I got your light on.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh.
I'm sitting in the city clerk.
Oh, well, welcome, Mr. Mason.
I'm sorry about that. So, so if, I heard what you all said, we, you know, talk about what we're talking about. We've shown you what the, what we have to cut already as far as, you know, what we need to remove in order to achieve the overall rollback rate, assuming that we want to include all of the program modifications that are there, okay? So the real concern is, is what, what are the impacts in the future years? Because we've shown you that it's a deficit. So I, I think from a practical standpoint, if we, you know, we prepare the, you have a preliminary budget already, it's going to be the same numbers, nothing's actually changed. changed, you know, and we'll prepare that proposed budget for you. At the same time, we'll tell you what the impacts are for the rollback rate. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Does that help everybody? Because you are, you have what you need as far as the rollback rate is concerned today for fiscal year 2023 only. We haven't told you, I mean, because, you know, we haven't settled yet, but if you want to understand what the impacts will be in '24, '25, and '26, and '27, then we'll have to come back and tell you what we're going to have to remove from the budget in order to achieve positive results in the future based upon our forecasted budget. And, and it's conservative, it is what it is. I can't change that. Okay? Does that help?
Okay, sure. Mr., Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I agree.
Everybody okay with that?
A question, when will we be meeting again? Because we seem to have a bunch of scheduled meetings, but...
August 8.
Budget workshops scheduled in August. Office papers are personal, and then student meetings in there and then a week after.
So my one...
Then we have to finalize the budget.
And I think a discussion that we need to have moving forward too is when we have these budget workshops, what is the expectation of council to get the information so we can review it?
Well, I guess that was my question. When can we expect to see the budget?
So I have to provide you the budget in before the first meeting in office, which I think is on August 3.
Latest, August 3.
So you're going to get it around August. So can you first drop the...
So...
The news is you got the model work out of the way. So now this is just...
I get that. I just get uncomfortable with words around. Can we get it on August 2nd?
Yeah.
He said on August 7.
The dead date's August 3, so that's...
Well, I'm just starting, I'm just trying to start with the date. We can back up from there.
The preliminary budget is prepared. So we, we give you the preliminary budget. You have a proposed budget. It's there. You know...
On August 3, we give you the whole...
Yeah, we give you the whole package, you know? Right. And we're, and all of that has actually been reviewed, so it's, you know, we're ready to go with it.
So we'll have it for a week before we have our next meeting.
Correct.
Well, that's what I'm trying to pin, that's what I'm trying to pin down.
Right, you'll have it for a week, the 3rd, and then we meet on the 8th, so you'll have a whole week to review it.
We'll make every effort to give you what the impacts are in 2024, '25, '26, and '27 on those, at that, at that time as well. Now, City Clerk needs to talk.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, just want to clarify...
Same light, but I guess it's a different person.
Yes, Mayor, just want to clarify that the first hearing in August is going to be August 9, which is a Tuesday.
Okay.
They are all Tuesdays.
Yeah, budget workshop, yeah. Because August 3 is a regular...
How can we clarify on when you're delivering August 2nd or 3rd?
Yes, we are submitting the city manager's proposed city lineup all...
And it'll, it will be based on?
It will be based on the 5.56 millage rate. And then we are also going to provide the council with additional information should the council wish to go to the rollback rate, the, how that impacts future, future meeting.
Did you understand that, Mr. Mayor, to be what they were doing?
Yes.
I, I thought I heard rollback rate. Thank you. Thank you for the...
Yeah, I think Mr. Mason had made that suggestion.
And again, I just want to clarify, you did not need final questions?
Yes.
It is only for me to need final questions.
And we didn't finish the polls. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right. Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. City Manager, as far as your perspective?
Staff, if I may. Mr. Mason, you have everything that you need to move forward?
Sure, got it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, and thanks, staff, for all the information, hard work up to this point. Time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting in Cape Coral City Council scheduled for today, July 20, 2022, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, meeting adjourned.[1762.48]